Your school committee for Monday, September 21st. If everyone can please rise and say the fudge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemonster Public School students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemonster. Having said our school statement, we'll move to our open forum session. And we have a list of folks who have previously requested to speak. So when I call your name, please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. The first one, and I do apologize if I butcher anyone's name. The first one is Caitlin Volopi. If you can please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Caitlin Volopi. I live on 20 Shady Lane. First of all, I want to say how great of a job the teachers are doing that my kids have this year. They're doing a fantastic job. Both of my kids, teachers are sweethearts and they have a ton of patience. I clearly love kids and teaching. But with that said, I just wanted to point out a few things and how virtual learning is failing my children. They are agitated, cranky, and tired from staring at the screen all day. This reaches a point of being inconsolable at points. Staring at a screen is really unhealthy for them. They're having a really hard time sleeping and they're totally overstimulated. They're having a difficult time typing into Google Docs that's not very user-friendly. My third grader's on an IEP for reading and he's unable to get the help that he deserves from me because I'm too busy helping my first grader. First grader needs a ton of help. He can't do assignments completely on his own because he struggles with reading and instructions. So he thankfully has no problem asking for help from his teacher, but I'm sure he's taking up a lot of her time. My first grader, there are constant distractions whenever people are not muting when they should be and the TV's in the background all the time. Hearing the teacher is difficult and it blows their concentration. He doesn't want to pay attention. He actually said because he's not in the classroom, he doesn't feel like he needs to pay attention. There's 100% parent involvement. We have to sit there to go through his assignments, check the emails, check the schedules, send in to meetings, et cetera. He can't read, so he can't do this on his own. When he was using headphones and we didn't hear in the beginning, he was missing assignments. Asynchronous learning is a total nightmare. They were zoned out and uninterested all day long. It was a waste of a day and no learning took place. When my son, my youngest son in first grade, when he's having school and adding games or whatever the case might be, he's struggling a little bit. If a teacher were to see that hands-on, they would be able to intervene, but instead it was myself.
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Eileen, you're muted. Ah, I am so sorry. Rob Volopi, you're next. If you could unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening, everybody. First, I just want to call attention and point that Mr. Howell is not here, but making light of the situation in the earlier meeting about opening up the doors and laughing is not appropriate. People are suffering and people are struggling right now. Also sharing his personal political views, this is not an appropriate form for that. That said, I want to talk about privacy. It's been brought up that you cannot blur out the backgrounds. So issue. It was said in a meeting, a subcommittee meeting on August 31st, that this was an option for book classroom. It is not. Again, a bill misled and the public is misled as well. There is no ETA to get to six. About alternatives? How can we ensure privacy? Now, our system isn't going to work. Not realistic. So I'd just like to note where this member got this information and why this wasn't researched by the school committee beforehand, before we went into remote, how come this wasn't looked into? Because obviously privacy is very important to all of us. We don't know people's situations. So what's the solution? And where do we go from here? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Lenore Scully. Lenore, can you unmute yourself? One last time, is Lenore Scully in the audience? And if you are, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself and speak. All right, having no response, we'll move on to the next person, Sean Green.
Can you hear me? Okay. So I get previously, I came on a little strong, I'll admit it. But this time around, I'm going to plead and beg with you to pass the kindergarten micro. I have a kindergarten student and I can tell you that sitting in front of a laptop is not in her best interest when it comes to learning. If you could do this for shops, if you could do this for certain sports, certainly you could do it for the children who have legitimately the lowest chances of catching Corona. So I just want you to keep that in mind when you're doing any voting tonight. And you know, I wish you all well.
Thank you. Next person is Wendy Anderson.
Hi, I'm Wendy Anderson. I live at 104 Harrison Street. This isn't what I'd originally planned to say, but some events over the last day have made me alter my statement. I want to make it abundantly clear that the letter on social media and that was sent to the school committee does not speak for all parents and students in any group. It is the opinion of the signers and some of the families and the groups they represent. They do not speak for me or my child. I do not believe there is a corrupt intent by any, and I do mean any, of the school committee members, those I agree with and those I don't. I believe everyone voted on the position they felt at the time was the only one they could live with, even if they weren't 100% sure what to do. I'm stupefied as to why there's so much blame and anger and some really absurd allegations of conspiracy and corruption being thrown at school committee members and other certain elected officials, but I barely heard a word about the fact that to bring kids back and keep them safe requires adequate staffing and transportation. I'm not hearing many questions about why we as a city aren't and haven't been funding education adequately for years and the part that played in exasperating a dire situation. People have been saying the superintendent wanted this and the school committee did that, but I haven't heard one critical word from her, only a spirit of making things work for our children. Why, when there's already so much divisiveness in the world, anyone would try to cause more is beyond me and it's saddening. We need to bring back or hire enough staff and make sure we can get kids to and from the building safely, make sure that the physical environment is safe, and make sure that the needs of all students are met. It is a lot to ask and no easy task. No district, including ours, has it all figured out yet because we have never been here like this before. We need to balance getting the students back into school and keeping them and their teachers and families safe. We have seen schools open and then have to close again when cases spike and we need to learn from that rather than to just jump in blindly. I also want to say I appreciate how difficult this is and thank you all for doing what I know is a truly thankless task. And I want to thank LCE teachers and staff for a great start to the year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person up is Catherine Gabriel.
Hello, yes. My name is Catherine. I currently live at 111 Milk Street in Pittsburgh. My daughter Charlotte attends Skyview Middle School after she graduated within the LEAP program from Francis Drake. I wanted to address the concerns about the LEAP program, particularly in terms of providing for the needs for the gifted and talented learners of Lemonster. There is a national association for gifted children called the NAGC, which has a lot of resources for the public school districts to provide the guidelines for how to handle the care for gifted and talented learners. A gifted learner is identified as a student with gifts and talents to perform or have the capacity to perform at higher levels than their same-age peers for one or more domains. They require modification to their educational experience to learn and realize their potential. They can come from various backgrounds, require sufficient access to appropriate learning opportunities, can have learning and processing disorders, and need support and guidance for their social, emotional learning needs. In order to provide support for these gifted learners that do have unique needs, educators need to be able to help gifted children develop their intellectual and academic potential in close collaboration with the child's parents. They need to have the skills to differentiate instruction across the achievement spectrum and they need to use special strategies for acceleration, flexible ability grouping, and specialized pull-out programming. The Lemonster Education Acceleration Program, identified as LEAP, was addressed over many years. It was in publication within local news and the Lowell Sun in 2015, identified as a program which is designed to provide specialized teaching for district students and the academically gifted.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person up is Bonnie Baden.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Dear school committee and education partners, I ask for your support of our kindergarten and ELL hybrid. Remote is not the proper environment for a young child. It's not healthy and there is very little educational gain. I urge you to roll out this hybrid to also all elementary students as soon as possible. We are soon to roll out our mini hybrids for high-need special education students. It should come to you as no surprise that while we appreciate the mini hybrids, it does not meet the majority of children's needs. It also violates their IEPs unless their placements have been amended. As CPAC chair, I urge you to give full authorization to Superintendent Deacon to rule out in person with more days and hours to all sub-separate classroom students and expand that to all students on IEPs and others in need. She really shouldn't have to wait for a school committee meeting to move us to the next level. Remote learning does not work for students with communication deficits or hands-on learners and for students who need small group instruction or one-to-one support. We are failing hundreds of our students. Lastly, I'd like to address LEAP programs. I'm a huge proponent of gifted and talented programs and educational offerings that meet all the varying needs of students in a district. Mixing a class of students with varying levels of education success is a disservice to all students in that class. Evidence suggests that gifted programs help students with academic achievement, socialization, and future success. Lemonster's program was at one time a robust offering. It's presently, for the most part, outside of math, now a program that gives more homework or projects rather than tapping into critical and advanced thinking. Studies show these programs help shape the future of students in these programs. We should have them, more programs that encompass not just math and science, but arts, history, theater, and music. Not enrichment, but robust academic offerings? A reminder that this district did not properly notify anyone prior to the start of the meeting that these programs were changing. We should address that, keep programming, and fix it for all future students. In closing, I would like to give hats off to my children's staff for how hard they worked to adapt to remote models. Their work's not unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person up is Mary Caparella.
Hi, this is Mary Caparella. I live at 4 Prospect Terrace. And I'm also the Lemonster High School Music Booster's marching band president. I respectfully requesting that you allow marching band to start up again. I have it on good authority that Pittsburgh High School marching band will be starting within two weeks. If they can do it, why can't we? Also, why is our band director, Robert Bergeron, not back up at the high school? This is a travesty to the band. We need him up there. We need this marching band. I'm sure all of you know how much the band means to the city of Lemonster. I implore that you get them back as soon as possible. Also, I do commend the teachers and the staff on the work that they are doing. However, I feel that my kids and a lot of kids need to be in the school. I have a senior and boy, he is missing out on a lot more than last year's graduating class ever did. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next person up is Kate McCormick.
Hi, my name is Kate McCormick and I have three children who attend school in the Lemonster School District. Additionally, I work for the Department of Children and Families as an investigator and service the children and families in this community on a daily basis. I have come here to tell you that remote learning is not working. If you believe that this is working in any capacity, I would like to invite you to my home to see what it's like to have three children in different grades, all with different needs, complete virtual learning, all while trying to maintain a full-time job that is considered essential. At the beginning of this school year, our superintendent stated, "Teachers will be teachers." However, four out of five nights last week, I was up until 2:00 AM completing critical functions for my job because I was unable to do so throughout the school day because I was assisting my children. My first grader requires constant assistance during the day. Additionally, my twin 10-year-old are in special education and are supposed to be in a sub-separate classroom per their IEPs. To date, they have not received the appropriate accommodations per their IEP and it was left to me to assist them and ensure they had the necessary and appropriate accommodations to successfully learn. This is not something I would have thought twice about if they were going to school in person. That's not to say that teachers aren't working hard. They are. They're working twice as hard for half the result. What is scarier than the virus itself is the reports of abuse and neglect I'm responding to every day. We have seen rates of domestic violence, drug use, alcohol use, and mental health, including child suicide attempts skyrocket as a result of children being home and without the people they often feel safest with. I would like to share with you some of the sentiments my six-year-old son shared with me while trying to do virtual learning just today. I can't do this. I'm not good enough for first grade. I'm almost giving up on myself. I need help. I implore you, the members of the school committee, to take a look at the bigger picture here. We are not a red city, nor are we surrounded by any. We are failing our kids and our community.
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rochelle Lappin. Rochelle, if you're in the audience, it's your turn to speak. Please unmute yourself. One last time, if Rochelle is in the audience, it's your turn. Having no response, we'll move on to the next person, Amy Gogan.
Hi, Amy Gogan, 42 Sacramento Drive. I'd like to tell you about our first week of remote learning. I have a sixth grader at Skyview and he did okay, just the usual technical issues that everyone else was having. We were not impressed with free-form Fridays though, which is a concept that we were not told about until Wednesday or Thursday. He tells me that he was practicing his typing skills all day. I don't know if he was exaggerating, but if not, five and a half hours in one activity with nothing else planned seems fairly monotonous. Learning is being compressed into 170 days as it is. I would think that it makes more sense to use all five school days to teach the curriculum. My son is supposed to be in the LEAP program. It has been wonderful for him. He is on the spectrum and the accelerated curriculum has given him a boost of confidence and a competitive edge. He is really proud of himself for excelling in this way. His principal has stated that they are simply raising the expectations of all students to a higher level, but not all kids have the same strength. Some kids will struggle to keep up while others will not feel challenged. The school committee voted to institute LEAP and they should have a say in whether or not it goes away. Please save LEAP. My other son is in a life skills class at JA. His OTPT and speech therapy will be remote for now. It remains to be seen if this is going to work for him. His SLP needs are great. He is eight years old and does not speak in complete sentences. He also has a one-to-one who is supposed to help him with transition. I don't have time to explain why this won't work from the other side of a computer screen, but I will be letting his team know. The district has had six months to figure this out. You have voted on the micro hybrids and that is a start, but please don't assume that we are okay. We are not. The poor teachers are doing twice the work to make half the impact. I am not an educator, but that must be so frustrating. Desi has been direct with districts that they should be paying attention to their color-coded designations. Lemonster is in the green. Only districts that are in the red for three weeks or more should be doing remote learning right now. I know this guidance came late. I know that our plans are already underway, but please...
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person who has previously signed up is Kimberly Caparella.
Hi, I'm Kim Caparella. I live on 4 Prospect Terrace. I am reading a letter from a fellow bandmate who couldn't make it tonight. Dear school committee, my name is Callie Nelson. I am a junior of Lemonster High School and a three-year member of the band program offered by the school. Last year, my peers and I had the honor of meeting Mr. Bergeron when he succeeded Mr. Hudson, who previously had the position for many years. It is my intent this evening to seek in favor of bringing Mr. Bergeron back to Lemonster High School as band director and major teacher. I understand that the COVID-19 pandemic poses a myriad of delays and difficulties where our extracurricular ideas are concerned. With this said, I understand that our band program will not be able to return in their full capacity until the states do so. Despite the fact we are innumerable...
Innumerable.
Innumerable opportunities for Mr. Bergeron to engage our band safely while inspiring the community who is struck with doubt and uncertainty. When Mr. Bergeron took over the band for Mr. Hudson, he came in with a vibrancy and drive that our school hadn't known we were missing. When my peers and I were at first steps to get a hold of the new instructor, Mora, Mr. Bergeron taught us how to adapt to situations that were new. He understood our concerns and assured us, every student, that it would be okay that things would not be the same as they had been three years prior. As we faced new uncertainties this year, Mr. Bergeron assures us of the same idea. If I were asked to recall the most galvanizing lesson that Mr. Bergeron instilled in each one of his students, I would respond with his overarching theme of staying driven when things don't go exactly as you intended. Let me make an example of this. Leading up to practices for competitions, our band would spend at least two nights a week outside practicing for hours. When the sky would open up or pour down on us, we continued to practice until we nailed each transition and piece of music.
Your two minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody who has not previously signed up wish to address the committee? You may now unmute yourself and introduce yourself, state your name and address.
Um, hello?
Hi.
My name is Anderson Delaire and I'm a senior at LHS this year and the treasurer of STOMP. I'm here to once again ask you to consider student voices as you continue to make major decisions that impact our lives. Earlier this month, we asked the committee to consider adding a non-voting student member to its ranks. In the next few weeks, we will ask to meet with the policy committee to lay out plans for how to make a student representative a reality. The impact of having a student voice cannot be overstated. If we wish to grow students into civically and socially aware adults, then we must give them some skin in the game. In the past, there have been student representatives on the school committee. STOMP is simply asking for a return to that format. We hope to meet with the policy committee soon and hopefully bring the issue up to a full committee vote in the near future because we are your future and we need a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee at this time? One more time, would anybody like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself. And one final and last time before we close this portion of the meeting, if there's anybody who would like to address the committee, please do so now.
I want to go back to school.
Thank you.
Do you want to say hi? Yeah.
Hi.
Say, how old are you?
Eight.
What grade are you in?
Second.
Yeah. Why do you want to go back to school?
Because I want to see my friends.
Okay.
Nice job.
Good job, Kate.
Would anybody else like to address the committee?
I would like to address the committee. My name is Jocelyn Bigelow and I live at 102 Blutell Street. Going on that brave eight-year-old's response about wanting to get back to school, remote does allow you to see your classmates and your friends, but being muted and continually asked to mute yourselves and sit in front of a screen is very robotic for some of our children and it becomes a lot more stressful and the social and emotional impact that has on our children when they're asked to do that is extremely detrimental and it does last much longer into the day and leads into the next day of having to do the same thing over and over again. And it does create a lot of anxiety that I think is something that all parents can relate to when it comes to having to explain to their children that they have to continue their education in this manner when it used to be such a social and emotional, you know, based program in the past.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee at this time? One last and final opportunity. If you would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself. All right, having no response, we're going to close the open portion of our meeting. We're going to move on to communications superintendent. There are no communications this evening? Okay. Then we're ready for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So as of today, we had six full days in school. I don't know if we've ever had a startup like this, but teachers, students, and families hit the ground running last Monday and went full, full days. I had an opportunity to, I like to say, visit and that I was invited, but I sort of forced my way into people's homes. So I actually sat with students to see it from that side of the computer screen at various levels in different classrooms to see what it was that our families are exhibiting and what students are feeling. And I saw, I mean, these pockets of greatness happening all over the place and students actually really excited. They could see their friends and they would say their names, but they just, you know, especially our youngest students, they just wanted to talk to their friends and we get that. So I definitely could see some of the social aspects that we as a community can work on a little bit and some of the pieces that we as a, with our families, how to better support them. But I have to say, our teachers and their lessons, they're giving 200%. What they're doing on the other side is above and beyond and they're trying to give the best of themselves because this is so new to everyone. So they're trying everything because it is brand new. And so I was able to interview people on various levels and sharing that and I will continue to go invited into homes. But if you ever get the chance to see it from a student's perspective, it's really, it's really interesting. So kudos to everybody out there. Our parents are doing everything they can to support their children. Our teachers are doing whatever they can. And whenever they say out of the mouths of babes, you've got to see the skill of our students being able to navigate this technology. I literally would bring my own technology to these very young children and say, "Fix this." They are amazing with it. So kudos to them. We're behind you. We're going to continue to outreach. If you need us, there is a team onboard. We are answering phone calls, emails, texts, whatever you have, 24/7. We're pretty quick. The good, the bad, the ugly, just give it to us. We're also really excited this week. We're ramping ourselves up because next week we start. CTI students are coming in. LCE students are coming in. All of our kindergarten will begin screening next week. This is so exciting to have our children in our buildings again. The buildings don't seem right right now without them. So we are contacting transportation. We're talking to families. We're talking to staff. What anybody needs to feel safe and secure to come into our buildings, we are putting out every... we are putting out everything we possibly can. So if there are other suggestions, please let us know. We're, we're listening to you. We're hearing you and we're doing everything possible to make sure that everyone is safe coming in. Also, the breakfast and lunch that is being offered, we're setting it up on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, but our food provider is providing for seven days a week. So if you go on a Monday, you get a Monday and Tuesday allotment and, and they really are providing some great meals. On Fridays, they provide for Fridays and the weekend. Our buildings right now are Fallbrook, Francis Drake, Johnny Appleseed and the high school. Over the summer, we were doing about 1,100 to 1,200 students per day. Right now, we're up over 2,500 a day. So we're growing. Please take advantage of this right now because it is free for any student under the age of 18. So food insecurity cannot be a condition of Lemonster at this time. So if you need help, we have our hotline. Reach out to us. We have volunteers that are helping to deliver meals if someone's in a difficult situation. And then otherwise our schools are open, so don't hesitate. And lastly, fall sports. If you live here in Lemonster, you would know that fall sports practicing started last Friday because there were children running all over the city of Lemonster. Any street you went on, you could see either the field hockey team or the soccer team or the cross-country team. They're conditioning, conditioning, conditioning. So they're out and about and it just feels so good to see our students in their typical activities at this time of the year. Even though it's getting cool, it, it helps because they were wearing all of their masks as they ran up and down Main Street. So if you see them, please give them a little shout out and say, keep it going because everybody is trying so hard. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. We'll move on to presentations and up first is the lead presentation. Sure, I'd like to turn this part over to Director Lorene Sapola and Principals Matt Steinberg and Principal Doug Niebel.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Superintendent Deacon has asked us to provide an update on programming for our advanced learners to you tonight. We continue to offer a full menu of honors, advanced programs and dual enrollment at our nine through 12 level. Co-op programs will also be in place for CTI students wherever possible. That includes our seniors. And as soon as we get additional guidance from the state, we are looking to add our juniors to our co-op positions as, as well. So those will continue to be in place. At the elementary level, we have a documented trend in the last few years of families that are choosing to stay at their neighborhood schools and are asking for specialized programs there. The district has been developing personalized learning at all of our schools and believe that this has helped to meet the needs of our advanced learners as well as some of our other specialized groups such as our L learners and special education. For some background for you all, personalized learning customizes the learning experiences for each student according to his or her unique skills, their abilities, their preferences, their backgrounds and their experiences. The hope is to improve a wide range of student outcomes for engagement, from achievement through well-being and engagement. So what does this look like at the elementary level? Well, at a couple of our schools, we have programs called Resident Expert Projects where students research something that's near and dear to their heart and they become the expert at the school and they present to their peers. We have a genius hour at one of the schools, which is structured pretty much the same way. The individual students pitch a project to their teacher. They develop a timeline with the teacher and they are given time every single week to work on that and get support from their teachers. All of our schools are mindfully creating community and using the first couple of weeks of the school year to learn about each student, to provide opportunities for students to learn about self-reflection
This meeting is being recorded.
And really taking an inventory of student skills and interests. At the middle school level, we are, we have families that also requested over the last couple of years to bring our programming to both our middle schools. It was at Skyview Middle School only and families had to make decisions about leaving a neighborhood school where they feel very supported, not going to the neighborhood middle school. So we have moved programming to both of our schools. In keeping with our personalized learning initiative, we've continued to develop, to develop the opportunities at our middle schools. If there has been any positive to this pandemic and we're such for them all the time, we have been immersed in research on remote and virtual learning. We feel that this opportunity really provides more chances for students to take part in personalizing their own learning, moving into the directions that they are interested in while being supported by our teachers and also their families. So as Paula, Superintendent Deacon had said, we've asked Matt Steinberg from Sammaset, our principal, and Doug Niebel, and they're going to continue on with the conversation about our middle school update. Matt, it's Matt.
Good evening, members of the committee and the listening public. And thank you, Lorene, for letting me step in and, and walk through some of this great idea that we've been working on for the past few days of, of how to, I think, adjust the programming for our gifted and talented students into this new normal, whether it be remote or eventually hopefully hybrid and then who knows where we go from there. So I know that in the packet that you received, Lorene had sent over kind of a, a brief outline of, of what we're looking to do for our sixth, seventh and eighth graders. So I'm just going to walk through what our plan is for that and explain a couple of things and then let Doug step in at the end and maybe clarify any questions that you may have as you go through it. But I just wanted to say to start and to echoing what Superintendent Deacon said, we had an incredible start and I think Mr. Niebel would also agree over at Skyview. Our first six days have been outstanding. All of our grade levels, our kids have been active and engaged and, you know, a couple of technological snafus here and there to be expected, but really moving smoothly. Teachers are very impressed and, and they really are doing an incredible job. They're coming up with amazing creative ways to meet our students. So what we're hoping to do in the next month or so, we're, we're looking at possibly mid-October. First, we'd start with hiring or looking to get somebody onboard to be a virtual advanced learning instructor to service both schools who will oversee this Lemonster Advanced Academy program and help the students with technical issues and answer any course questions that may arise and access support throughout the school day. And then what we're going to do is we have a menu of enrichment courses through one of our online learning platforms, Edgenuity, that we have used for a few years now in Lemonster. And we can take these courses and provide that to the students and families for them to self-select. And what we're going to do and how we're going to do this is that we've already scheduled our seventh and eighth grade students in advanced math classes for this year. Our seventh graders are in advanced math, um, one section, and our eighth grade advanced math is Algebra I, similar to what they had in the years past. So those students who are in that small group of about 25 at my building and I think about the same at Mr. Niebel's, are going to be contacted with these course options to look over with their families. And they'll get the option to choose if they'd like to take courses from that online platform in the four, the three other content areas, ELA, science and history in lieu of the current classes that they're enrolled in, or they could choose to stay in the classes that they currently are in. So they have that option to choose and we'll put that out to families in plenty of time to give them a chance to really review what they want to do. We, you know, we also are going to offer other enrichment options. This program has foreign languages, it has STEM electives. You know, it was a real shame because we had to lose that program. We have some opportunities through the online platform, Edgenuity, to bring that back. There's a couple of courses on there that, that would bring that kind of a opportunity for students that they could also choose to take on their own. And we are exploring eventually the option of possibly providing credit, particularly for foreign language, out of the eighth grade. You know, if students do really well and, and we look at maybe an assessment option to open up some more options for them in, at the high school level, the next level. So I think going back to what Lorene said, the classes are self-paced. These students who are, are, are high achievers, you know, if they're really motoring through them or eager enough, can take multiple classes. We're going to be offering this throughout this year so they can do it remotely or if we do return to a hybrid option, they can, you know, move on to a next one if they feel comfortable. And I think what, what I really like about this for the seventh and eighth graders is that it gives them some course options to, to really pique their interest for the next level. You know, I know the high school has a, a very wide array of courses in their catalog and this allows them to look at some options, gives them full ownership of their learning and really push ahead the pace they want and structure the courses to their liking. So that's for seventh and eighth grade, just a quick rundown. And then go back and going back to sixth, we want to be, you know, equitable and efficient. We're researching, you know, assessments to offer all of our sixth graders in the near future and looking at those who hit a particular benchmark in those assessments, we can offer this same opportunity to them beginning in January, when we begin our third quarter, in January 21. But in the meantime, I know at Sammaset and I'm sure at Skyview, our sixth grade teachers are already hitting the ground running and eventually going to be tailoring some enrichment opportunities for the students at all levels, you know, including our high achievers, looking for challenges to push themselves. So this is kind of our, our rollout and what we're looking to do. And at this time, I'm going to come back to the meetings. I was reading some of my notes and turn it over to Mr. Niebel to finish up.
Good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Paula, Lorene, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Committee members, everybody else out there, thank you for tuning in tonight and for the great, you know, statements being made from the public out there. I think there was a lot of great points brought up. I'm so glad somebody brought up the National Association for Gifted Children because that is a fantastic resource with pretty much any piece of information you could look for and a lot of great just experiences from around the country through that organization. And we do take a look at that and, and try to find the best way to educate our students. And I think Matt hit on it. I know Lorene and Paula have hit on it, you know, especially in a year where we have lost valuable academic time in the spring. We have to reinvent ourselves and we've had to reinvent how we give education in a remote environment. And especially with the loss of some solid instruction time in the spring, I think it's all the more important to have extremely high expectations for our students, even though we know the best opportunity is going to be in person. We're going to do the best we can and get the highest expectations out of our students in remote. And this program that Matt has been explaining is our goal here. We do have our groups together and we are offering a range of options through the Edgenuity program. I think one of our parents brought it up that even in a traditional advanced program, there are students who indeed still struggle. There are students who find the courses rather easy and breeze through them and need additional challenges. That is a standard concern for us as administrators is that are we truly meeting the needs of each individual in that standard advanced model? With this model, we are having the opportunity to go to the individual themselves. We can have the students and the families work with us to tailor the education of each student to meet their own individual needs. Some students would be able to take this to a whole nother level. As Matt said, we are looking at the opportunities to offer high school credit for some of the students who truly take this and are able to run with it to an advanced degree. We also honor the students who are able to tailor it to their own needs and maybe not reach as far as some of our other advanced students, but certainly taking themselves in an area where they are interested, an area where they are comfortable and an area where they might not have been able to get to in a standard advanced curriculum. So that is really our goal here by offering a menu of self-paced courses. These students can get a glimpse of what they might be able to get into, into high school ages. As Matt said, this will give them a real good opportunity to start thinking, how am I going to structure my schedule in high school? How am I going to take advantage of the opportunities now to give myself those advanced learning opportunities throughout high school and beyond? So we're really excited by the fact that we are going to give these children truly independent ability to tailor the education to their own needs. We're excited by it. Believe it or not, I think as Paula mentioned, this is a unique opportunity. Remote learning, even though we can all come up with negatives for it, we are finding a unique opportunity to bring this program to our students, to our families in this environment. And we're going to want to take this and run with it and make it the most efficient program it can be. And we think we really got a great plan in place. We've got a lot of opportunities for families to be a part of the decision-making. And as Matt said, we're going to share those opportunities and we're hoping people jump aboard and take this as far as they can take it. At this point, that's our general overview. I know we're here and we're willing to take questions from the committee. So fire away, either for Lorene, for Matt, for myself, for Paula.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to call in people individually and to see if you have any questions or comments. We're going to start with Brandon.
Uh, thank you guys for the presentation. I don't think I have anything right now.
Okay. Peter?
Uh, yeah, I mean, thank you for the presentation. I mean, my big question would be, I mean, I get using Edgenuity while we're remote right now, but looking ahead, you know, what is, what does this program look like when, you know, next year when we are back in school, hopefully, you know, completely? How, how does it evolve when we're back to a, you know, quote unquote, normal school year?
I, I can jump on that one if you want.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Um, I think, Peter, that, that's a great question. You know, we also during our discussion of trying to tailor something for this particular moment in time, we can also now look at for what maybe 21, 22, when we do come back to in-person learning, how can we adjust it? You know, how can we look at what was really going well with that program? You know, and, and make some tweaks and, and see what we want to do for our, our, our students in that program. So it's something that we've explored, we've talked about and we will discuss that throughout the year. That's definitely something that was circling around as we tried to formulate this for, for this year.
And so, I mean, just to dig a little deeper on that and I understand it's still evolving in terms of what it will look like in the coming years. But as far as like right now, I believe you said, at least for some of the grade levels, they can swap out a class for an equivalent of, you know, whatever their, their choosing was. Does that portion of it, do you foresee that going on in the future? Or are these all going to have to be things that students will have to do in their own time outside of the normal schedule?
I'm being very patient and raising my hand like a good student.
Go ahead, Paula.
So Peter, the, the nice piece about this was we were already doing that. We were sort of scrambling the last couple of years. We've had individuals that, that wanted more than what the grade level could give. So we had students over the last two years sort of doing a program by themselves in Edgenuity because we already have that in district. And so some students, you know, they love quantum physics. Who wouldn't? So we are able to put them on a pathway to send them through that. So we were already making all sorts of modifications all over the place. And so when we went into this virtual piece, Edgenuity is the state platform for education that they're using. So there's so much research behind it. We know that it has the quality. So if a student wants to get out of, say, an eighth grade science class and join a high school chemistry because that's where they're going, they can do that. And so they, they can replace them or they can add additional courses. They can do it on their own if they want or not. And so we just want to be able to give students credit for that. So we've been playing around with this, trying to put programs together because it can't just be about pacing and keeping the just be about pacing and keeping the pacing going. It has to be about, you know, a fever for learning and what your passion is. So the last few years, mathematics really seems to be a gateway for many of our students. They want to go even faster than the curriculum can go. So here's an opportunity. If you wanted to jump into something, go right ahead and they can work it on their own. And if we have this virtual person to guide them and help them out, then that's true personalized learning. So it really just kind of solidified what we were already doing and made it for us a lot easier. Bless you. So thank you for asking that. So this is only going to improve what we were already patching together and giving it a solid foundation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. I guess there's some clarifying questions first. So the children that are or will be able to participate are the kids that have traditionally been in the LEAP program with the exception of the sixth graders that are going to test in?
Yes, it was the seventh and eighth graders who previously have been recommended this year for the program, yes.
Okay. So then I heard something about hiring hopefully for for a position in October.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there would be a tech piece higher hopefully. And so I guess just looking at this, a couple of things. In writing and hearing what you guys are saying, it sounds amazing and it sounds like an opportunity. I'd probably want a lot of our kids to have more than just the twenty five, especially as I think of generally the LEAP kids have been really great at historically math and science to see, you know, an enrichment in art and languages. You know, I'd like that to be able to be given to more than just the twenty five kids. But I think, and I don't think anyone's surprised by this, that there's frustration that a program that, whether it's virtual or in person, has been historically doing well, was eliminated without a lot of feedback. So I guess from parents. So I guess my question would be, has this been presented to parents yet? And if so, what feedback has there been about this as opposed to those that have traditionally been in LEAP?
Lorraine, can you take that, please?
So the the first answer, Melissa, is no, we have not brought this to our families as of yet. Paula had asked us to bring this to the attention of the school committee in an update, and that's what we're doing tonight. I do know that both Doug and Matt and teachers at our element, I mean, principals at our elementary level have discussed things with their teachers. So the the educational piece of it has been reviewed by our staff, but we certainly will be looking to get input from families. And, you know, we're with you, Melissa. I will say, we want to walk before we run, but this personalized learning is something that that we feel very strongly about for all of our children. And Doug had mentioned this earlier to his families. We're looking to be adding opportunities. We did not want this to seem that we were taking something away, and so we apologize for that miscommunication. We were really more about adding opportunities for more children, not taking away from some of the students that were already involved in this. So that's our next step is to go to the families.
So I guess I'm going to keep on calling on everyone, but just to make note that the LEAP program, its institution and its, if it is to be dissolved, needs to be voted on by the school committee. So that piece has been sort of overlooked, so that we do need to address that. So for folks to please keep that in mind as we're talking about this. Next, are you done, Melissa?
Yeah, I guess just in right in discussion with you as part of your comment, I would like there I would like there to be some parent feedback on this since they're just now hearing it for the first time too before we vote. But then I also feel like if kids are in groups and this is going to be advertised, you know, they need to be in those groups sooner rather than later.
Certainly. So certainly understand that. And we are, again, if I miscommunicated, I did not mean to, we are not dissolving anything. We are looking to personalize this. I will say that one of the concerns that we've had in the past is putting our twenty five children into one class with one teacher and not being able to personalize for all of the different levels of skill, ability, and interest that we've had. So we're really feeling that this is going to be improving this program and then hopefully adding to it. So we are not, this is chairman, we are not looking to dissolve any program.
And also, Melissa, just so for your own edification too, in terms of the groups, you know, I think Matt touched on it in his part of the presentation, we already have the students in those advanced math groups. So our algebra group for eighth grade is already grouped together. Our advanced math in seventh grade already grouped together. And I'm glad you brought it up too, Melissa, because it works back to Peter's question, which was, yeah, this opportunity gives us the chance next year going forward to open this up to a more representative population of our of our own schools. So we're looking to hopefully expand this and give other kids the opportunity to get in on some advanced learning, hundred percent. Chris?
I just wanted to say one thing. I did look back in the minutes. The LEAP program was instituted in two thousand and seven. It was not voted on by the school committee. It was just done in a presentation because I believe it was just a curriculum programmatic piece. So it was not voted on.
Okay. Are you sure we didn't vote on it? I mean, you're the guru of of everything that's happened, but I could have sworn that we did vote on it and it's come up to us on two other occasions. And Sue and Dean were on the committee all those years with me and might have a recollection as well. But we had previously voted on keeping it, maintaining the program when it was going to be disbanded in the past. So I know that this has come up on at least two other occasions.
I can I can check. I remember later on, there was something about third grade that did come up. I can check on that. But when I went back to two thousand and seven, when the program was instituted, it did not have a vote with it. It was just a presentation. But I can look later on to see if I can find.
Yeah, that would be helpful because I know I I recall voting on it, but, you know, that we'll see if Sue and Dean also recall that. Sue, you're up next.
Okay, it definitely was a programmatic change and we did vote on that program. My question is, how many children do you hope to service through this effort?
Right now, I think we're we're pretty even between both schools, Matt, but you'd be better than I to get your numbers. But at this iteration, we're looking at our algebra group currently has twenty three students, basically making up, if you want to look at it, eight percent of our eighth grade group. Our seventh grade is at twenty five students, which again, eight and a half percent of the population of our current seventh grade here at Skyview.
Yeah, and we're a little higher, as Samusette. I think our our former LEAP cohort was about twenty five each grade level, so it's about fourteen, fifteen percent of our total seventh and eighth grade class currently.
Okay, thank you. Isabel?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And I also want to thank Melissa for her questions because a lot of them were mine. I got a lot of emails and advocacy from parents who have students in the current or former LEAP program that are certainly concerned about this new abrupt change. And while it wasn't your intention, of course, of not including them in the process, I don't think it was communicated quite as effectively as you had hoped. And so I really appreciate the presentation and the breakdown of the middle school grades and what that's going to look like. But my question is for the elementary level. I know Francis Drake in particular is considered a LEAP school. And Lorraine, you talked about expanding it to neighborhood schools. So I'm just I'm just curious as to whether or not the students who were in elementary schools last year that contained LEAP and were in the LEAP program are going to maintain that same program because the Lemonster Advanced Academy does not include the elementary level students in that outline of the program. And I know definitely elementary students are in the LEAP program already. So if you could just touch upon that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. The the advanced learners were that are currently at Francis Drake were given the opportunity to stay at Francis Drake. We have a small cohort in fourth grade, a very small class, and then we have two small classes in fifth grade. So they were given the opportunity to make to stay at that school with the transportation. Of course, that's a moot point right now, but that will continue for them. Or they were given the opportunity to go back to their neighborhood school if they wanted to. We still have families who are making that decision. Basically, it's for their family's sake, that if they have other siblings that are at a different school and they want to keep them in a bubble. But that's a different conversation this year than has been in the past. But yes, there still are students in fourth and fifth grade. I will say, not to the detriment of Francis Drake at all, because our families love that program and love the teachers there, but we have had families at all of the neighborhood schools who've gone and they've visited and they've had conversations. And they said, we really feel that we're getting the needs met for our children at our neighborhood schools. And so many of them have stayed at Fallbrook, Northwest, and Johnny Appleseed. So we're really trying, again, not to disband a program at all. We really do feel that these advanced learners need to be protected and supported the same way as all of our specialized programs are. But we are hoping that we will be able to continue the work at all four elementary schools.
Okay, that was just going to be my follow-up question quickly, is that if they decided to go to their neighborhood school for convenience and safety purposes, even transportation, anything like that, the program would not follow them or would it follow them? Like, would you allow, would the LEAP program be put into place at Fallbrook, for instance, whereas right now it's currently at Francis Drake with the small cohorts of fourth and fifth grade?
I'd like to say that we do have advanced learner work that's happening at every school. It doesn't have the acronym tied to it, but we have, as I mentioned, a couple of the examples. I have a huge list that the teachers and principals at each of the schools gave me, but for being short tonight, I didn't list them. But there are many wonderful opportunities that are personalized and project-based that are happening, just not under the acronyms that we have at Francis Drake.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ron?
Yeah, thank you very much for this presentation. I I really enjoyed it. I was looking at the grade six analysis and dissemination of student results. Now, that analysis and dissemination, it's like a graph, correct?
We take advantage of technology and we have, one of the assessments we use is called the NWA, Measures of Academic Progress. And they provide us with feedback on the students' work in lots of graphs, in any form of data that we would like, and it's very easy for us to manipulate it using our technology.
Now, does this start at the sixth grade or do you start off in the third or fourth grade?
I'm in charge of accountability, so we do it in kindergarten.
Well, I'm just, you know, it it's, I was just asking because you just you just had grade six and I, because I was basically looking for a graph for grade seven and grade eight, you know, because I don't remember who it was saying about cohorts. Maybe it was you, Lorraine. Lorraine, a cohort, how many kids are in a cohort? And do you allow it to grow or do you allow it to contract? What's what say you?
So if you if you listen to the National Association for Gifted and Talented Students, they really talk about between two to three percent of students might be considered gifted and talented. We have always increased that to ten percent, and so we don't really call it a true gifted and talented program. It's an advanced or high achiever program, and we're at about ten percent, and we have been across the board, about ten percent of the students. So forty five to fifty students in each grade level that we've seen on our Measures of Academic Progress are at that high level and are ready to be to be pushed along. It's not perfect because it's not the only, we should be doing a lot more assessment, but to be honest, this year, we we're going to start with that map. And we certainly will be continuing to add other pieces of data, but we don't want to inundate the children with data or assessment at this time.
But I got something, I got something written down here, self-directed. So you Doug, Matt, Lorraine, anybody, jump in. When you're saying self-directed, do they get a little push to be self-directed? What happens if they start lagging? Or what happens if they go too far?
That's a great question, Ron, and.
Do you have any limit on how far they can go? And what happens when they go past all?
All of that?
All the guidelines you have set aside for them? What happens?
I tell you what, they can, if they if they get through all of it, Ron, they can have my seat in my office. I mean, that'll be fine. I think they would have proven themselves above where I am right now, so.
I'll just, I think. Sorry, Doug, I jumped on you, but.
Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Me, young lady, take a course last year in Edgenuity. It's pretty rigorous. It it takes a bit. So, I mean, there are kids who are going to race right through this and they're going to do well. That virtual instructor is going to be there to kind of reset if they hit a technical glitch. If, I think in this program, if I'm not mistaken, Lorraine, that when they when they pass an assessment, they need like a to go into the next chapter, correct? Because that's something that they need permission to do. Right. So they they can't do it all in one day. They would have to obviously get some, you know, feedback from the instructor to look over it. But, yeah, I mean, as Doug said, if they if they go through all of them, great. I mean, if they if they get through one or two in a year, great. It it's it gives them the opportunity to to take ownership of that and really work at their own pace.
And this would show up on a graph? They have, they all, they have, they all have their own personal graph from, as Lorraine was saying, from kindergarten all the way to where they're at. And it follows them, right?
With this program, they'd be able to record all of that, Ron? So as soon as they're enrolled in the program, it will track wherever they go and we'd be able to provide any kind of graphing or any kind of charts that you would look for in terms of their advancement through the program.
Because, you know, I would, I would hope, I would hope in 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 the future, when you make bring this up for us to look at, you'd have a a sample graph, doesn't have to be a real student or just a potential student, where they're coming from, where they're doing, and what are their projections for how far they're going to go? That's what I, that's what I want. I want to know how, what are the projections for them, where are they going to go? And go ahead.
So, Ron, I think that's a great, that's a great thing to be looking at. I think it's part of what we looked at, as I was saying, in any, in a typical advanced program, the kids do become limited. There are some kids, even in the best advanced programming, that go beyond the programming. This idea that we have, this program that we're that we want to have for the kids, gives them the ability to go as far as they can take it. It doesn't limit them. We're not sure how far they can go. I anticipate the graph for some kids is going to be skyrocketing straight up. And I think that's the opportunity we're giving them is to go as far as they can push themselves, which is something we were limited by with the standard curriculum.
All right, I'm I'm happy. Thanks. I appreciate this. Thank you.
All right, so I do have a couple. So I've always been a proponent of LEAP. I've also been a proponent of managing to somehow do it in neighborhood schools. So I kind of like that part of this. But I do have some questions. So first, I'm picking up on what Ron was asking you initially. I'm a little confused with the grade six assessment and analysis. I'm a little confused with the grade six assessment and analysis. We already have students in grade six who've been in LEAP. They're already identified. They're already assessed. So are you reassessing them, or are you assessing other students to see who should be added? What exactly is going on in sixth grade? Like, should parents see this and think, wait, my kid's been in LEAP for three years, but he needs to get assessed, or she needs to get assessed before they can continue? What exactly are you saying?
Yes. Lorraine?
Yeah, basically. Oh, go ahead, Paul.
I'm going to ask Lorraine to take that. We have had, the last two years, we have had, we've used assessments that we have had MCAS, and we've had the MAP that we've been doing right along. So we do a reanalysis when children transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. That's a time also where there have been some students who have not gone to Francis Drake, and they would like to be considered for something, especially now that we have it at both middle schools, and they can stay at their neighborhood school. There have also been some families who've said, now that my child's going into middle school, this isn't something we want to continue, or maybe we want to continue just with math or just with ELA. And the principals have allowed that to happen. So it's a really, it's a good transition. Unfortunately as well, we did not do our whole cohort of math testing last year. We didn't do the spring piece. And so we are ready to assess all of our children. This math testing is not just for our high achievers. It's to help the teachers get a read on every child in ELA and math. And as soon as we do that, we will be, yes, Michael, looking to invite children that may not have been identified, and giving the parents who have children the option of continuing or not.
All right. My second question is, I mean, I, I'm impressed with all the extra things that we're getting here. On the other hand, it seems to me, I'm just trying to imagine, you know, the choice you're presenting a student and their families, because, right, if I understand correctly, the choice is between sort of the classroom environment with their friends, classmates that they're used to, or a more self-directed, individualized, alternative course, right? So you've opened up instructional possibilities, but it sounds like, I don't know, I mean, it may sound like a socially difficult thing to do. So that's just, that's a thing that's going through my mind. I definitely, I think, you know, we need to, absolutely think we need to meet the educational needs of every student, wherever they are. So I'm certainly in favor of adding things that they can do. I suspect that we will have some students who are capable of some higher achievement, but maybe don't want to go into, I'm taking myself out of my class, and I'm going to do this online separate thing. So I'm sure you're thinking about this already, but I'm definitely like, you know, ways to challenge students who are at that level as well.
Well, as I said, the initiative that we have for personalized learning, it really is for all of our students. And Doug and Matt have been moving forward with that. Some of the technology we have that we talked about with Ronnie does allow teachers to get really good information about students. And so, yes, point taken, Michael. We, we want to be opening this up and really personalizing everyone's learning.
Lastly, I'll just say, years ago, I was on the School Improvement Council at Johnny Appleseed. And partly, I think it was a little bit of a competitive thing. But when LEAP started happening and students started leaving there to go over to the LEAP program, I mean, I know at the time, they worked really hard on coming up with ways to challenge students at whatever level. And I think there were a lot of students who were high achievers who stayed and were happy with that. So I know it's a thing that is possible. I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of doing that for everybody. All right. That's all that I had to say.
Okay, Dean?
Thank you. First, I'll put my mayor's, I'll put my school committee hat on and a combination of mayor's hat. But if you remember, coming out of 2018, our administration sought the appropriation to the school department so that we could begin to get that first allotment of Chromebooks within it, with the intent of getting every single student in the system of Chromebook for a number of reasons. One, and mostly because we wanted and saw that students wanted to continue to learn after they left school. And ingenuity was exactly part of that process, where students were thirsty for additional learning in the fields and areas of curriculum that they thought was interesting to them, but also important as they pursued various colleges. They wanted to try to get an upper edge. And that's exactly the case. Today, it's not uncommon to read an article, hear a podcast, and at the end say, even 60 Minutes on a Sunday night. They only, they have 60 Minutes, but they try to, they crunch a lot in 60 Minutes. They can't crunch it all in there. At the very end, it's, it's very common on a podcast or 60 Minutes, or reading a newspaper article, or, or an article in a magazine, for them to say, for more information, and add that other information where you can find it, and the information is unlimited. A veteran told me just a couple of weeks ago, everything he's learned, he's learned in war and on YouTube. And, and this is exactly the case. So this, this to answer Peter's question is, this shouldn't and won't go away, because there'll always be that need, that for us to learn more and more and more about a particular subject, whether it be, you know, part of your career path, or just something that you're interested in. And so thank you for the presentation. That was, that was good. It was enlightening and very helpful to all three of you. But let me put my mayor's hat on, and I'll ask both of the principals. So if we were to move towards a hybrid system, how long would it take you to get your schools ready? Because I need, as mayor, to better understand that. I don't mean to put you in a difficult spot, but I think when we first started talking about whether we're going to adopt, you know, hybrid or remote, I think it was, it was stated at that time, we were ready to go then to a hybrid. Is that still the case? And how long will it take you to prepare your schools?
I think we've got all the safety pieces that we wanted to make sure we had in the schools, Dean. I think we have, for the most part. There was some delay in shipments of things like Plexiglas barriers, that type of thing. I think everybody's been seeing those COVID-related delays, including our Chromebooks, which has been frustrating across the board. But I think for now, we've got the Plexiglas that we need. I believe there's another shipment or another order being placed to make sure that we can do some individual testing with our special education students. But other than that, we have signage in the schools. We've got some preliminary plans in terms of how many kids we can fit in. So that hybrid model, I think we could get going in pretty short order if needed. But I think the biggest thing is we wanted to make sure we got all our safety equipment in first, and there has been some delays on that. But we're very close to getting to the point where we have everything that we ordered in. We're just hoping there's no further delays.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Sorry to follow up. There's a lot more steps to go through to get to that. But I mean, I think where the district were, were planning for that, I think we're, as Doug mentioned, he covered a lot of it, but we're working towards that. I think we're, we're getting there. I don't know if we have a timeline. I can't answer that question, so working towards that.
If you had to guess on the time, I mean, I, I mean, at some point, what's missing, I guess, if you could let me know? I mean, I'm asking this as mayor. I mean, I have the right to sort of ask these questions. But it, it would be valuable to get a better understanding. There are certain things that you need. I think Doug elaborated on the things that he needs.
It looks like Paula wants to answer, and then I just, we're kind of going off topic, Dean, and this is important stuff, but I don't know whether that should be under a different presentation. But it is an important question.
Well, we have both principals, we have both principals here tonight, and it's a valid question, and I think the answer, it should be, it should be answered. These are the people that run these buildings.
I would have to say, I would have to say, starting Monday, once our mini hybrids get in, it's exciting to know that we have quite a few students coming in with the 28th move, and then even double that with the October 5th. We feel that we're in good shape, so we have to monitor and assess where we're at, and we can go from there. Pieces have begun, begun to show up in our buildings. Our staff is feeling somewhat more comfortable. But until we actually get our students back and get rolling, I don't want to give a definitive answer, but we're sitting in a much better place than we thought we were. So we will constantly give updates, but Monday really is an exciting time for us, and even better on October 5th.
Okay. I just want to note, for the record, and I have the minutes here, that we were prepared at the meeting that we decided that it was a majority vote to go to a remote learning, that it was stated, and I have the minutes here, that we were ready to go to hybrid at that particular point. Thank you. All schools. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. So I'll go last. I do appreciate the presentation, and I am excited to offer as many children as possible, many students, the opportunity for increased learning and advance, you know, their individual skills. I do worry about the lack of a peer cohort. I think, you know, there's some loss in not having the ability to have those conversations among your peers, sort of bounce ideas off each other, share and assist, you know, each other in that learning journey, so that you miss out on that clearly by doing everything independently. And I do worry about, you know, we made decisions years ago to implement the LEAP program, and it was a programmatic change because we were sending students from all the schools to one school. At that time, we initially started off at the elementary school with Francis Drake, and then as those students moved up to the middle school, we started instituting the LEAP program at the middle school. I don't feel that maybe things were explained enough to the, to parents who were, have kids who were last year in LEAP for this year. And I do still think that that's a school committee vote. But at the same time, I want to applaud, you know, the most opportunities we can give our students to challenge them and help them reach their full potential. So I am in favor of the ingenuity and the advanced learning project, but I don't want it to be sort of at the expense of, you know, some of the other pieces, particularly, you know, having that peer group. And obviously, we can't have that, you know, sort of in the normal way, because we're working remotely right now. So I know that, you know, it's, it's difficult to achieve all of that. But I certainly don't want folks and students to miss out either.
I mean, if I might speak to that?
Sure.
I've made notes of that, and I do know that one of the things we talked about, if we can get ourselves to a hybrid and these children are in school, both Matt and Doug are working with their teachers and their other administrators to find a place where these children, if they're in school, would be with other children. They might not be in the same content, they're on a computer, but they would have other students to bounce things off of. I think especially that might happen with foreign language. If we have a number of students deciding to take Spanish or to take French, they would be working at their own pace, but they could be in a room on their computer and still have some peer-to-peer work. So I've made a note of that, and that would be part of our planning going forward.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank both of the principals. Please pass on to your staffs and your teams, they have worked, I, I think you, you stated it perfectly. They have gone above and beyond. They're trying everything. They're working really hard to make this work. It's been tough for a lot of parents and a lot of students. Every kid is like a snowflake. We say it all the time. Everyone's different, and they all learn differently. But what can't be, you know, what we can't pass on is, is our thanks to each and every one of the staff members for, for all of the work they've done. They've really worked hard, and, and I think that, and I think that parents and, and students and everyone appreciates their hard work.
Sue, were you going to say? Oh, sorry about that. Sue, were you going to say something? No? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions at this time? All right. I thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, and we look forward to challenging and providing new opportunities for our students.
Thank you very much for the time tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
So, and then Chris, if we can still just have clarification, you know, on sort of, you know, what we've done in the past with LEAP, and I don't expect you to, obviously, to do it now, but, you know, if we can have that for our next meeting, that would be helpful.
Yes, I went through 2006 and 2007. I found the minutes of 2007, but I'll do the next 13 years.
Thank you.
In my spare time.
You've got plenty of time. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
You might start with when we added it to the middle school, because that would have been an opportunity for the school committee. That might have been a time it happened.
Yeah. And I think there was one year we didn't have third grade at one point. So let me go in those, but I know when we instituted it, it was a presentation, not a vote. And, and I don't know whether it's because the school committee does policy finance and the hiring and firing of the superintendent, and there was no financial implication at that time. Yeah.
But usually, we vote to, like, when we changed from a program, like even to, you know, to have, you know, like, when my kids started, they went from kindergarten to grade eight, and then we voted to, you know, go to a middle school concept. You know, we've always voted on various programs, or if we're adding plumbing to, you know, CTEI or whatever.
I don't know if it had anything to do with when we, when we, when we added the curriculum.
Well, I think at the time, there was a lot of changes going on. We were instituting full-day kindergarten. We were instituting the LEAP. We were doing all this.
Right. We voted on full-day kindergarten. We voted on LCE. We voted on, you know, all those kinds of programs. So that's why this would often be a program.
Yeah, and we were voting to take away the, divide the high school away from the five schools that it was. So there was a lot going on, so.
I'll check. All right. Very appreciate it. Sue, we're going to talk about athletic fees. Yep. David Palazzi? There you are.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. Superintendent Deegan, the school committee, thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to bring to your attention something that's been a topic among all athletic directors with our athletic season in a diminished capacity with some of the games that are offered, that we had a discussion about user fees, and those are the, the fees that the parents pay for their child to participate in any of our athletic sports teams. And those, those fees go to supplement the cost of the athletic program in its totality. So, you know, where we originally, the fees are $150 for full payment, $75 for reduced lunch for a second child, and then $50 for free lunch student athletes. So I am here tonight to ask for a vote to lower the cost for each family, and the reasoning behind that is, although we are participating, there will be a diminished capacity in games, not necessarily practices. So each sport is pretty much going from a 14 to 18 game schedule down to an eight to 11 game schedule. So I factored it in and discussed this with other ADs, asking you tonight, pretty much with a 33% reduction in the user fee. So that would be moved to $100 for full pay, $50 for reduced lunch fee or second child fee, and $30 for free lunch. And I kind of rounded them down, if anybody's out there doing the math. But, you know, we're not taking in any concessions. Our busing for a lot of the games will, will not be what it usually is, as well as officials. So whereas we may not have some expenses in certain areas, we, we certainly will, will have to spend more money in other areas. So rather than a 50% reduction, I figured I'd, you know, kind of put it in the middle, which I think is fair, and looking at the numbers at a 30, 33% reduction.
Questions from the committee? Brandon?
Just a quick question, based on our conversation during the policy subcommittee meeting. The superintendent had kind of indicated that if there was an issue where the season wasn't able to continue the full way, that refunds might be able to be given back to families. Can you just talk about that real quick?
Oh, excellent question. So we have sign up online, where we do offer the parents to pay online, and we have the ability to credit a parent for another sports season, so we can kind of work that towards another season. But we also have the ability to give refunds. So, you know, you know, looking at how the season is going, pretty much the games start October 5th. The kids started this past Friday. You know, going beyond half, halfway, I think, you know, we, we would look at, at no refund, but... half, halfway, I think, you know, we would look at, at no refund, but before that time, or if the season gets canceled, you know, next week at a certain point, we could certainly give a full refund. But I, I think the point is, we can also, you know, in, in good conscience, we can certainly, if we go through half the season and we can't give a full refund, we can certainly forward the credit to another season or another child in the family.
And I think we were also talking about that we would be collecting fees by season by season, because we don't know, obviously, what's going to happen in the winter season.
Exactly. This vote would pretty much be like the vote for athletics, just season by season, because we really don't know, you know, what, where we're headed with the schedule.
Thank you.
Melissa, did you have a question?
Just a quick one. Would the fees apply to those kids that are doing sort of like early workouts for like football and baseball and are going to start conditioning now, or would it strictly be the play season?
No, this, this is strictly the season where we have officials and the kids are wearing uniforms and they're in a regular season.
Peter?
No, I don't have any comments at this time. I mean, I'm not a big fan of the season in general, but obviously, you know, there's the financial aspect of it. So I don't have any questions.
Sue?
I'm all set, thanks.
Isabel?
No questions. I am another person not super thrilled with the fees and the fee system, but I don't have questions. I mean, I understand why we have to implement the ones we have, but it's unfortunate.
Ron?
Yeah, my, I got just two, two questions. The first one, Dave was talking about busing. How many buses are we going to be needing, and how many kids are going to be on the buses? Are they going to be, they're going to be transported from one place to the other?
That's a great question. They have, they have protocols in place, so, you know, the math, we will need a 77-passenger bus, which can only really seat 50 adults. And there's a protocol in order to seat, to be seated. So each kid will be on a window seat, and the kid behind him will be on an aisle seat, and you zigzag down one row, and then you zigzag up another row. So we can only have 22 student athletes per team with three coaches. So if you do the math with, I'm sure we've all drawn up charts here with a bus chart, you can fit 25 people on a bus. So we will need a bus for a varsity team, and we will need a bus for the JV team if we are away. Right now, four of our sports have, when one's away, the other one's home. So, you know, whereas we're going to need an additional bus for, to fit the protocol, fit the need of the protocol, we're not going to need additional buses for those games because of the diminished schedule.
And how much is it going to be costing for the bus? And they're going to have to have a complete clean-out before and after, am I right?
Correct.
Well, that, that would certainly, absolutely, the bus company will have to, to clean the bus, but we, you know, we just pay the fee for, you know, for the bus, like we usually do. And, you know, that's, that's really where the numbers are at with, with the number of buses in the season.
Do you have a cost, how much is it going to cost because we have to use more buses? Hey, Paula, somebody?
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to use more buses. That's, that's why we're, we're asking for a diminished fee. We're not going to have as many officials. We're not going to have as many busing. So we only, we don't feel it's fair or right to charge a full user fee.
Right. But there are four, there are four sports, am I right, Paula?
Yes.
Okay. And does that mean two of them are going to be, two of them are going to go away to play, and two of them are going to stay?
I can answer that very quickly. So boys' and girls' soccer will be playing Tuesday and Thursday. When the boys are away, the girls are home. Field hockey will be playing Monday and Friday. They have four away games and four home. And then golf, we have our own transportation. Our coach uses one of the smaller buses, and then we'll need a full bus for cross-country. So everything is the same as last year. It's just a matter of utilizing those services for away games. So in a normal season, we would have nine or nine away games. We're not going to have that. We're only going to have four per team.
Yeah. And if they go into the playoffs, will they have playoffs?
So they only have, that's a very good question. They have eight games, and then there's a playoff game. That would be nine. So the most that soccer and field hockey can play is nine, excuse me, the least they can play is nine, the most they can play is 11 games. And then we're working on something for golf, as well as field hockey, as well as cross-country.
And this, the, this, this cut that you talk about, that 33%, you know, I'm, I'm of the mind also, regarding the fees, we had that discussion in policy. It's the devil that we have to play with. Anyway, okay, thanks for the presentation. I, I, it was very illuminating. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Michael?
If I remember correctly, we had mentioned in the previous discussion about sports, the possibility of allowing some transportation by parents rather than on the bus. Have, has, have we gone anywhere with that?
We, because we're remote at this time, the parents have been driving their kids to practice from their homes, or kids are driving themselves. But when it comes to the games at this time, we will be transporting the kids to the games.
Okay. All right. So I'll just restate my general objection to charging fees of free lunch students. But other than that, I, I think you've, this, this proposal is a step in the right direction and makes sense. So I'm prepared to support it.
Dean?
Well, I'm all set. Just want to thank the coach for putting some of these programs together. I know how important sports is to many of these students. And when you were talking about zigzagging charts, I thought you were talking about football. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dave, I appreciate your presentation, and I know that no one likes to charge fees, but it's one of those things that unfortunately, we need to do to be fiscally responsible. But I do approve of charging less and, you know, sort of a prorated basis because we will be, the students have a shorter season, they're playing less games, so it just makes sense. And I think that we've always had the policy, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that if any family is truly experiencing some hardship, whether you're free and reduced lunch or not, they certainly can reach out to you to make some accommodations, and sometimes fees have been actually waived.
Certainly. We have those cases come up, and we, you know, we don't want to deter anybody from playing an athletic sport, you know, due to cost.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I need a motion?
Motion. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dean.
Motion.
A second?
A second.
Thank you. It's going to be a voice vote. Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll, I'll be a yay. Motion carries. We're going to move on to mini-hybrid kindergarten and English-language learners.
Thank you. So this evening, I have Renee Cosker speaking about the ELL program, and Ann-Margaret Tassie Mitchell, principal, speaking about the kindergarten. This has been a real labor of love, and we're excited to get these two groups in. We're proposing for October 19th. They'd be the third set of mini-hybrids coming in. We will continue to monitor and modify whatever's happening with our students. We really need to collect some data for parents that say, I want to stay fully remote versus coming in. Once they're in, we'll find out how many are with us, and if we need to make adjustments at that time, we will. But right now, we have schedules ready to roll out for the 19th. So, Renee, if you can start with-
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee, and thank you for your time tonight. I'm very excited to talk about our X hybrid group, and that's our ELL, our English-language learner student population. As you know, this population is rapidly growing, and is a highly diverse group of students, and there's no single program that will meet all their needs. So we know that they need explicit focus on literacy and language. It's an integral part of their effective teaching for these students. We know that the strategic use of a student's first language is really important. We know that inquiring academic language and vocabulary is one of the most effective predictors of success for all these students. So moving forward, we'd like to have them in for this, for their English language education, for the first from 9 to 12, and we'll show those schedules in a couple of minutes. But what was effective best practice for teaching us is to have the language literacy instruction needs to be taught in a culturally responsive way. Meaningful face-to-face instruction builds our English-language learner's home language, the cultural assets and prior knowledge by making connections between what they already know and the new learning that's taking place. As we did some research on this, as you can see, we have a microhybrid, hybrids, excuse me, student schedule up there for grades one through eight. And knowing that's a draft, and this goes along with our buses and transportation, students will arrive and grab a breakfast and have a quick SEL check-in with their teacher. They'll be invited to their ELL services from 9:15 to 11:45, and then they'll be on the bus with a lunch to go. And then at what time they get home and settle down, they will join their classroom remotely for the remainder of the day. That's for grades one through eight. When researching at the high school level, we realize that this schedule is probably not going to work for our high school students, where they have five blocks of instruction. So we will be moving our high school students' schedule, which is also in a draft, and I know that you received. And those students will be coming in at 8:45, and they will be staying the whole day with our ELL staff at the high school, so that they will receive their ELL specialized services. And then our staff and our tutors and pairs will be helping them with their content classes with support. Throughout the day, they will have a lunch break. They will have their 12:05 to 12:35, some of their SEL time, and some extra help if needed. And then they'll return back to their ASL services and content classes with support. And for that, for all grades nine through 12, these are our levels ones and twos students that will be in our school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Fridays all day, with Wednesday being remotely, with the school-wide cleaning in those classrooms. Students will participate in the ELL classes, and they will also participate in their content classes with support, with them there physically, so that will help. While in-person, students will remain in small cohorts with math breaks, movement breaks, classroom or outside, improper sanitary protocols within that day, the nine through 12. Going back to grades one through eight, which I did get ahead of myself, our one through eight, sorry, Steve, cohort will come in. It's cohort one is our, basically our A through Ls. They will come in and attend in-person learning on Monday and Tuesday, and will attend their classes remotely Wednesday through Friday. A cohort two will come in on Thursday and Friday, which is M through Z in most cases. As you know, we made sure that all our siblings were coming in at the same time, so that they can work. Some of our students, if we had more on one cohort than the other, and if they didn't have a sibling, we were able to move them to a different cohort, then we need to do that also, that we were so safe in our numbers within these classroom settings. Our, our students will be in-person for two days, and they will work remotely for the other three days. Our ELL teachers will continue to work with the students at home in the afternoon. Once the students, they have their lunch and they go, the students who are not with them in the morning physically will have some touch-in time with them in the afternoon, along with their classroom teacher's daily instruction. Again, while in-person, they will have math breaks, movement breaks, and proper sanitary protocols will be followed for these areas of instruction. So at this point in time, these are the reasons like, that we would like to start our hybrid model on Monday, October 19th, for our English-language learners, levels one and two. For those who don't know the levels of one and two, these are our students with our most needs for our English-language learners, in that these levels come from our state testing for access, which is, which all students were given in January before we went remotely, who are using the levels that the state has provided for us, and their action plans that they also have put together. Any questions?
I'm going to call on folks. Brandon?
I don't have any questions, so just thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited about this.
Peter?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Melissa?
I don't have specific questions about ELL. I have a couple of questions about busing, but we might be able to tie that in with the kindergarten piece when we get there.
Thanks, Melissa. I did, did say that about transportation. They are going to try to tie it in with the kindergarten.
Right. Okay, Isabel?
It's a clarifying question I think I missed in the presentation. On the grades one to eight, it has cohorts one and two, and then I noticed on the high school, it doesn't have those cohorts. Those students are all in that one cohort together for Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, correct? I just want to make sure I understand that right.
Yeah, so the high school, A through Z, all students who are levels one and two, and that's about 48 of our students, will all be in our school, at the high school, and they'll be in their own small cohorts within the classroom settings that they'll be assigned to, because they have a five-period schedule. So even though they get their ELL services two out of those five periods, when they're, they're going to be grouped according to where other classrooms they have, so the teachers will move to those cohorts for that instruction, and tutors and pairs will be there to support them in the other content areas.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Sue?
Minor attention to detail. You expect the kids to be released at 12:30? No, 12 o'clock and be home by 12:00?
Nope, that's a minor detail. So we know that they'll, hopefully, will be at 11:45 on the bus, and we're going to ask them to join their classrooms. We are mostly at the elementary level. They are in specialist at that time, so they'll have, be able to do specials at the end of the day, and they'll rejoin their classroom at 12:45. But there might be some pickups along the way until we get the transportation done. But we also feel that having our students in front of us is more of a priority than them having the, coming in late in the, in the, in the class in the end. And our teachers are willing to look at and work with our ELL instructors around that piece, when it comes down to it, and if approved.
Okay. Ron?
All right. Thank, thank you for this presentation. It's a very, very all-encompassing. I might have missed something. I was looking, the, the microhybrid grades one through eight, cohorts one and two, white and blue and white. Did you tell us how many kids are there going to be?
Nope, there, at the high school, it's about 50, like I said, between 48 and 50, as we have some new people coming in. At each of the elementary schools, there's roughly between 30 and 35. We have three instructors at each of those schools, and they can only have 12 to 15 students within the classroom setting. So that's basically between what we have right now and our levels ones and twos. We tried to add some places the level threes, but it brought us past our student ratio. So we need to keep it right now at the levels ones and twos. But once we send out our notification to our parents, and if there's a huge amount at schools that were going to stay remotely, which we will work on, then they will also add students in there, and we can move into the next level. So this is kind of what our draft looks like, and obviously, we're going to do the same thing as we did with special ed. The parents will get a, a letter sent out, which we'll be working on on Wednesday, around if their child needs transportation, and if they're going to attend, and we'll work with our numbers when, once we get that data in from our parents.
All right, thanks. I appreciate that.
Mike?
Isabel and Ron asked my question, so I'm set.
Okay, Dean?
Yes. Quick questions. Why are we waiting?
Why are we waiting till the nineteenth? That's almost another month from now.
I think that when we looked at these hybrids, that was the next thing on our timescale as we did September twenty-eighth, October fifth. The following Monday is a holiday, so we went with the following Monday on the nineteenth so that it would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, as we move students into our schools. Miss Deacon, Susan Deacon can explain if there's anything different that I know of.
No, you're right on. We bring them in and monitoring as we go along, especially the ELL, there's such a, it is a very large cohort for us here in Leominster, so we, the scheduling became a bit of a trick in trying to make sure that, especially at the high school, that those students need to be there full-time because trying to get in-between, the course load was just too difficult. There's students that need to be included and have their exclusionary services as well.
And then the cleaning on Wednesdays, cannot, can that not be done at night? I mean, we're closing the school for a full day because, for midweek cleaning, that can't, that cannot be done in the evening?
It could be, but we don't have the amount of custodians to do as deeply as we want. We're trying to keep our bubbles together, so we have a Monday, Tuesday bubble, deep, deep cleaning, spray every classroom, every surface, every railing, doorknob to accommodate who we have for custodians. And then we come back in Thursday for two days and then we have the weekend to, once again, do a deep cleaning. We're trying to keep our surroundings as clear and clean as possible, so we're providing that time. And we have the artistry to just stay online on Wednesday, so it, it really helps with the teachers, they're having meetings with parents, they're having one-on-one small group sessions on Wednesday, so it accommodates a lot more at this time.
And then the high school is full day, but the younger kids only get a half a day? Doesn't it seem like it should be the other way around? If we're gonna give somebody a half day and somebody a full day?
So, yep, so the reason why we had to go with the high school being a full day is because their ELL services are grouped in as a two periods and then the other three periods, if we did transportation in the middle of the day, they would miss one of those periods of instruction and we don't wanna take that away from those students with credits and their ability to be able to participate still with their classmates in those areas. Yes, the ELL learners would be great to have them all in for the full day, but at the same time, our teachers are teaching two grade levels during that period at some point and that means the classroom teachers would have to participate in the, in that learning where we're not ready to bring all our students back yet, but that will be our next step, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Renee. I don't have any questions, Dean and others asked mine. What I'd like to do is to have a vote on this, separate from the kindergarteners, so if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh.
All right, and Melissa will, and Melissa, you'll second it? It'll be a voice vote. Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Dean?
I'll be a yay.
And I'm a yay. Motion carries.
I would like to say if it's all possible, the nineteenth's a month away, almost a month away, that if it's any possible way to speed it up and, and make it sooner, the numbers are low right now and weather is good, we can open the windows and I just, I, I would hate to, to miss an opportunity if, if we, we were ready to go and, and could move it up to a closer date.
Okay, okay Dean, we can look into that. Thank you. Have a great night.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to the kindergarten presentation.
May I add before, please Eileen?
Sure.
I would hope i, if there is a, a look at fast-forwarding it, that it be brought back to us, 'cause I, personally, you know, the, the timeline would adjust how I vote.
Okay, so it, point taken. At this time we'll go forward with the kindergarten presentation, so we have Ann-Margaret Tessie Mitchell?
Hi, good evening everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to discuss the kindergarten hybrid model, which we would like to start on October nineteenth as well. At the district, we believe that it is critical to give our kindergarten students a form of in-person learning. This model will provide the opportunity for our young students to learn and practice essential social, emotional and problem-solving skills as well as provide them with the foundation for learning critical early literacy and math skills. And I'm sure Steve will pull up the schedule, which I'd like to talk about with you. Thank you. So our first schedule is a model of what in-person learning would look like for kindergarten students across the district. And they would be divided similarly, as Renee mentioned, into a cohort one and cohort two, dividing the students in half as much and as equally as possible. And if our numbers were over, we would look at those students who did not have siblings that would be affected by altering which cohort they may be in, just to balance them out for safety and health regulations. So in the morning, those students would be attending in-person learning on Monday and Tuesday, that would be cohort one, have breakfast at school and an SEL check-in, so it would be a great time to build community, get the students started for their day, and followed by their English Language Arts block, in which we use our Curriculum of Wonders, Foundations, which is a phonemic awareness and phonics curriculum. It would also give us time for small group instruction and writing. The students would then also go into their math, using their Envisions curriculum, give the teachers and students opportunity for small group learning, and then we would prepare them for dismissal. They would have a lunch to go home and transportation, whether that be through bus or parents. And then we uniquely put this synchronous block in the afternoon, so we give the time for students to transport home, have their lunch, and then all students, including those learning remotely, would be able to join their classmates all together for a lesson in the afternoon. And teachers could choose whether it might be a science lesson that day, a social studies lesson, could be extra teacher support time based on assessments that the teacher has done, they might wanna follow up with something they've taught previously, could be a read-aloud time, but it's a great way to build community in the afternoon and have all the students involved in that synchronous block. And then the afternoon would remain similar to what it is now for student and family check-in time. And then again, Wednesdays would be for that deep cleaning and students would be learning remotely, all students that day. And then followed up by Thursday and Friday, we would have cohort two come in and they would narrow that same schedule that you saw on Monday and Tuesday, again, including that synchronous block in the afternoon for all students to participate and see their classmates and build community, which we know is so important for our youngest learners. The second schedule, also so you could see what that would look like remotely for those students then working remotely while the other cohort is at school, you can see that on Monday and Tuesday cohort two, which would be at-home learning and they would have a variety of asynchronous activities, which would be developmentally appropriate. We do have some online learning platforms that we use in kindergarten, such as Lexia, which is an online intervention for phonemic awareness and phonics. We also have Symphony Math, which correlates with our Envisions curriculum. And also teachers will be assigning project-based learning, so ongoing activities that are developmentally appropriate. And then of course, time built in for lunch and we have the wonderful opportunity for our, all of our kindergarten students to have specials. So we have physical education, we have arts, media and music, and so we're very lucky that we have that opportunity for our students to link into those Google classrooms or those specials to really participate in them. And then again, those students learning remotely would have that synchronous block where they would join their classmates all together with their teachers and instructional aides in the afternoon. And so that's pretty much what our schedule and what we're proposing this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ann-Margaret. Brandon, do you have any questions?
Just one question. The in-person cohorts, are those similar in size to the L cohort sizes as well?
And so this would be across the district, so it's over three hundred kindergarten students that we would be bringing in, but of course, as we look at this, we would follow all the safety and health regulations, so the students would be divided into, you know, two cohorts within the classroom so that we would follow those safety guidelines in coming in.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Peter?
Yeah, the only question I have is, I have more of like a district policy question. I know with kids, I believe it's first kindergarten, first grade, you know, masks are as recommended but not enforced. What are, what are we looking at to work with families? Obviously, you know, the, the younger the kid, it's a little, a little harder, but what are, what are our policies around that that we've been developing and how are we working with families to inform them?
So as our mask policy follows all the state and federal guidelines, as you mentioned, and so I think the most important thing here would be communication between home and school and that, you know, I know our kindergarten staff across the district and our instructional aides, our administrators are excellent with communication. So I think that the communication between, you know, families and school would be of most importance. So if it, you know, a family really wishes that their child to wear a mask at school, I know that teachers and the staff would definitely help out with that. We also have guidance counselors, and so we have a variety of staff that I think could really help with that. As you know, there are specific reasons or students that may not be able to tolerate a mask. I also think we can take the opportunity for, you know, the fresh air, getting outside, doing some learning outside as well and safely socially distanced in that matter.
We also have the opportunity during the case screenings, which start next week, each parent and student gets directly spoken to. So that has to be a major part of the conversation as we're talking about bringing students in, so that opportunity of the face-to-face, one-on-one conversations will be happening. And teachers are already doing those little lessons through their Google meets. The little ones are in there, they're practicing to wash hands and why it's important to wear a mask if you have one. So the kindergarten teachers are extraordinary at this, so they've already started those conversations with their students.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I, I just, I've heard from a couple of parents that are, you know, obviously the masks are protecting others, not necessarily themselves, so, you know, there's a little bit of concern, but again, it's, it's harder with the younger ages, but I'm sure overall it'll, it'll go over well.
Yeah, thank you. Melissa?
Hi, thank you, and I look forward to getting our youngest ones back, so thank you for the presentation. I had a question and I don't know if it's specific to you, but are, are all of our three and four-year-olds special needs, three, yeah, three and four-year-olds special needs, have they started two days at least of in-person services?
Sure, so at the preschool level, we actually have the highest number of micro hybrids that will begin on October fifth. We actually have four classes at the preschool level, which will begin. So we are seeing a significant number of our young students, our preschool students, as well as the, will be clinics available for other students who may not be in the highly special ed students, but will have the opportunity to have some of their services through the clinics that Kim had presented in the micro hybrid model.
Great.
For special education students.
So then, the next question has more to do about the transportation piece in the timeline. As we look at their leaving to go home at twelve to one, but then we also have first graders potentially leaving the school at the same time, do we have the, I'm sure we have the plan to be able to have kids leave staggered and still make it home safely and still have lunch, you know, things that have broken in the, an hour?
I think we, you know, we allowed a little extra time in kindergarten piece on, just to make sure our students get settled. And I think as Renee mentioned, you know, this is a draft and so it will be dependent upon, you know, seeing how the transportation goes and if students are getting home, we can always adjust that block in the afternoon if needed as well. And I think, you know, as we have our special education students coming in and then we're slowly gonna roll in our L learners and then also our kindergarten, I think that we're doing this very carefully and it's very well thought out and planned, so I think that, you know, this slow rollout will be a, a critical piece destroying that transportation goes smoothly as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sue? Being the grandparent of a kindergartner, I am very anxious to roll out a plan for kindergartners, so the sooner the better.
We are too.
We're excited and our students are very excited also.
Yeah, thank you. Isabel?
No, just thank you for the presentation. I wanna just echo the sentiments of my fellow members and just before the vote, which I am assuming is going to be happening after all of this discussion, I am going to be recusing myself from this vote.
Thank you. Ron?
Thank you for this presentation. I, my only question was the transportation part. Do you ever present in how many kids are gonna be taking the bus or gonna be, or be brought home by their family?
Ron, we would have to gather that information. Once we get the approval to move forward with this, then we would gather that information from families and ask them whether they would be using bus transportation or transporting the students themselves so that we could plan effectively and accordingly.
So will you send it, will you get, will you, will you send that information to Paula Superintendent so she can forward that to us so we can?
Sure.
Please?
Mike?
Thank you.
Thanks Ron.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think my questions have been answered.
Okay. Dean? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have anything else?
You know, I'm just looking at the state positivity rate, which has been climbing since the first week of August, so I'm worried. I'm, I'm appreciating the care with which we're doing this and the, the deliberate one thing at a time rollout, I think that gives us our best chance of continuing to see that things are working out okay so we can keep going. I'm really hoping this works. There's still a part of me that's worried, but I, I appreciate the plan in front of us.
Dean? Dean, did you have a comment?
Yes, am I the last to ask questions?
I'll be after you.
All right, because I would like to, to make a motion, because, and my motion would be that we approve this but expand it to the, up until the third grade, so that would include kindergarten, first grade, second grade and third grade. On July thirtieth, we voted for remote at the time, and the minutes will reflect that we were told by administration and myself and administration both were in favor of a hybrid system. We were told at that particular time, July thirtieth, that we'd be ready. These kids, even though the teachers and everyone are working so hard, and they are working hard, I, I've been in the homes, I hear the stories, these students are having a difficult time. This isn't makeup for them. This isn't, you, you paint the walls in your house and if you don't like the color, you paint it again and you can paint it again and again and again. These students have been, these students have been out of school, out of the classroom since March and they have lost and it is very difficult to make it up if, if at all possible. I see no reason, we are at seven today, we are in, we are in green, we continue to be in green, the weather is good, we can open the windows, we can take the students out, and there is absolutely- And there is absolutely no scientific reason at all. Department of Education has weighed in on this. Association of Pediatrics, everyone has weighed in on this. There's absolutely no reason, none, why these students can't return. We were told July 30th that there was a risk. Well, almost two months have gone by and our numbers have actually gone down. They're at low risk. The state has already issued to 12 school systems in the state letters because they are in either green or unshaded. And that would be my, my motion.
Sorry, do we have a second? So at this time, we don't have a second to your motion, Dean.
Okay, thank you.
Going at last, I am also very anxious to see the kindergartners attend in person. I think that's very vital for kindergartners to have that socialization and a lot of their hands on learning. So I'm excited that we're doing this off the ground. Having said that, would anybody like to make a motion? Melissa? Would anybody like to second the motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, Sue beat you to it, Ron.
Okay, no problem.
That's going to be a voice vote. Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay, and again, the 19th is part of my vote.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue? Yay. Um, Isabel?
I'm abstaining.
Ron?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the introduction of the new facilities director.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, sorry, Paul.
No, this is just, this is great news. Thank you.
Yeah, nope, absolutely. I'm absolutely thrilled to make an introduction to you tonight. Elliot Butch Nato has been nominated as our new facilities director. He joined us officially on September 2nd, 2020. Mr. Nato was selected by a committee including representatives from the city, the human resource department, and business department, in addition to our former director, Tony Shabiras. He distinguished himself clearly from all the other candidates during the interview process and received glowing recommendations from those he had worked with in the past. Butch most recently served as the related theory carpentry teacher for the Lemmester Center for Technical Education and Innovation, where he had taught since 2014. He holds several licenses related to construction and received a bachelor's in industrial technology with a concentration in construction supervision and management from Pittsburgh State. He has impressed us all with his willingness to immerse himself in work that needs to be accomplished across the district in the short, short time since he's joined us in this new capacity. I am personally thrilled, and I know we all are, to introduce Elliot Butch Nato, our new facilities director.
Well, thank you so much for that great introduction, Dr. Riley. You know, I'd like to thank the city of Lemmester for giving me this opportunity to serve as a facilities director for the public school system. I do not take this responsibility lightly and can assure you that decisions that I make will always be in the best interest of the city schools, students, administrators, and teachers. My main priority will be to ensure that our students and faculties have a healthy and safe environment in which to work with, which right now is very important considering the situation we're in. I just completed basically my second week. And I have been entertaining a lot of visits to buildings and meeting with custodial staff and school administrators. I am in the process of learning the layout of the buildings as well as the concerns that may need to be addressed in the future. I am reviewing, uh, excuse me, I'm reviewing past reports and meeting with our contractors so I may get an understanding of any issues that have been or will need to be addressed now and in the future. Uh, finally, I'd also like to take a, a second to thank everyone that I have met with for the warm welcome and their pa, their patience during my transition period. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to add?
Talk about a guy who's hit the ground running.
I know. Very busy time. Sue?
I, I would just like to say welcome, and I'd love to see you be proactive with the needs of our building. I think that's been one thing that we have not had in the past. So I know you came from, you know, CTEI. So I, I'm looking forward to your, you know, your view, your observations and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, did you have something to add? Mike?
I'm just going to echo what Sue said, and then I'm done.
Peter?
I know, I'm all set, but I would echo Sue as well. Welcome.
Thank you.
Isabel?
I'll also echo everyone else. But welcome, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. I appreciate all that you've done so far, stating you've hit the ground running, so thanks.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm not sure if I missed anybody, Melissa or Ron?
No, ditto. I, I repeat what everyone else said and welcome aboard and we're looking forward to working with them, with you.
Thank you.
Great, we look forward to working with you and congratulations. We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve August 31st, 2020. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any discussion, corrections, omissions, or errors? With nobody pointing anything out, uh, that's wonderful. Chris, I'm going to do a voice call. Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue? Yay. Isabel?
Congrats, Chris, yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. All right, we're going to move on to the subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee, is there anything to report?
Nothing to report. We haven't met since last meeting. Our general fund remains the same appropriation. We will be meeting again
You kind of, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll just try again. Finance has not met since the last school committee meeting, so nothing to report. I just said that the appropriation of the general fund is the same as it was before. Finance will be meeting again soon, I believe next week.
Great, thank you. Perfect. Policy Subcommittee?
Policy Subcommittee, we met and we were, we talked about the extracurricular fees and transportation fees. I believe we already voted on the extracurricular fees, correct?
So we voted on them in our subcommittee meeting, and so we do need to
But didn't we have, what did we vote on when, when Dave talked? Well, that was on the athletics.
That was just athletics. We were talking about all other, um...
And the file is filed EEAA, and it's for student services, transportation of students. And we, I believe, go ahead, no, no.
So, Ron, we did not change the policy.
No, we didn't.
But we did vote to, um...
Suspend.
Suspend and not collect any fees for transportation this year or for, um, clubs, National Honor Society, student government, those kinds of organizations. Because at this point, we're unclear, you know, what
Where exactly we're going.
Yeah, whether they'll even meet or what to extent they'll be able to, um, you know, offer those services.
So we have to make a, we have to vote, correct?
Right, so the, yeah, so the policy Go ahead.
Go ahead, Eileen, no, no.
Nope, I was just going to say the policy committee voted what we need and made a recommendation to the committee as a whole. And so now we need a motion.
So I make a motion that we suspend the fees for the student fees for this year, correct? Eileen? Oh, Eileen?
Yep, I'm sorry, yep, yep, for transportation and for, um, clubs, organizations, um, not, uh, you know, with the exception of athletics.
For this particular year. We will revisit, we will revisit at the end to see where we're at.
Correct. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, it's going to be, anybody have any discussion? It'll be a voice vote. Peter?
Oh, the yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
And Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. Thank you. So now we need to move into new and old business. We have the human resource report.
Yes, um, our, our team is, will be including these reports in each one of the packets, um, moving forward. The HR report used to be given at the first meeting of every month, but it's important right now that it's in every packet and that our staffing levels was a request, a comparison from last year to this year we included. And enrollment, it seems our enrollment is coming back up. We're up over 6,000 right now with the addition of 50 kindergarten students. So that was a big deficit for us, and this report was written as of last Thursday. So the enrollment center continues to bring families in, and we're hoping to get back up to around 6,100, if not even more so.
Does any, um, Sue, Brandon, do you have any comments, questions?
I'll say, thank you.
Peter?
I just want to thank you for providing it because I know I was one of the ones that had explicitly asked for it last time around. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. Melissa?
Sue? Yeah, I, I have a couple, I guess, concerns, and I think we heard them tonight from the public as well. You know, so looking at the numbers that we were given for the staffing levels last year to this year, we're looking at 33 less teachers, 42 less tutors, 62 less aides, and four, four less secretaries. That's 141 staff people from last year to this year. Now, we have no idea of the, you know, and Dean, you, you made the motion to go hybrid with kindergarten through third. My concern is, we have no clue what the funding is going to look like when we go back into full hybrid or full school. So, you know, we talked about adequate staffing. We, we just, we, we as a finance subcommittee, and I don't know, maybe it should be part of the full committee, we need to look at the finances of this district and see how we're going to support education. I'm not sure we're going to do it. So that's my concern right now. I think we're riding on the tails of saving money going hybrid. No, going remote, we're saving money. When we go hybrid, I don't know if we have money to sustain, you know, educating all our students in the buildings. So I, I think it's really important that we all sit down and look at numbers, look at staffing. You know, wha, what is it going to look like if we go back into the buildings? I'm, I'm very concerned, and I've heard parents reiterate that as well. But as a school committee member, and I think we all should be concerned about the financial implications. We also heard tonight about the marching band. Why, why can't we have the marching band? What's the difference between the marching band and athletics? I, I'm not sure I understand that argument.
So I, I just, yeah, so I talked to Eileen about this. Bob Bergeron will be taking over the marching band. He is just writing up a proposal for, for us. He has to tell us how it can happen. There are certain instruments they cannot play, they need to stay 10 feet apart, they need to be outside. So I, his plan actually is almost completely done. Members that are having extracurriculars are writing it up according to guidance. The theater department is trying to come up with a plan. The art department is trying to come up with a plan. Chorus, um, you know, they're trying to come up with a virtual plan because they're not supposed to be singing and praying. Same with many of the instruments. So we are having marching band, and it will be Bob Bergeron.
Okay, but my concern is, why isn't the communication there? You know, it should be communicated, and I think we've heard a lot of instances tonight where communication, there's been a shortfall of communication, whether it's the lead program. I mean, these are really tough times, but it's also really important that we need to be transparent in our communications with the public and, and again, with the finances. I'm really concerned, and I, I, again, I, I don't have a problem if we as a full committee discuss the finances because I'm concerned that we're not going to have money to open the, the gates and have all these kids back in the buildings. I, I think we need to address that. I mean, like I said, we're looking at 141 staff positions left. I don't know what we have left in the budget. We were given numbers, but, and we did ask for numbers of staff compared to the student. What's the student-teacher ratio? We don't know, we have none of that. And I think that's critical for us to know if we're going to be able to sustain the budget and educate the, the kids in our district. Transportation, another variable. So I, I, you know, and I throw that out to the committee. I, you know, I, I, Mike, I sent you an email, I said we need to have a finance meeting. You know, finances are a big part of being able to, to adequately educate our students. You know, there's just So I throw that out there to the committee and
So, um, I don't know if, Mike, you, you have a response to Sue specifically? But it sounds like you are having a meeting. And although, um, the finance subcommittee, only finance subcommittee people can participate, everyone on the committee can attend.
Right, but, but you know, we also have to look at the budget for next year. Again, this is not going away.
Right, I still think
We're short, we're short, 141 staff people. Now, we know there's a reserve for money when we bring them back into the buildings. But where, where's the information? We need that information.
Aren't we still waiting for the state to certify the amount of money they're giving us? Which will impact our decision making?
That's right. As far as I know, the state's, you know, the state's plan, as my understanding, is to pass the budget in October. So I don't think we're, they've, you know, we have an assurance that we're going to get a certain amount at least, but that's just an assurance that hasn't been voted and signed. They have a plan. Isabel could perhaps update us on this, she would know more directly than I would. But last I heard, the plan was to, that they were going to vote a budget in October. So we won't have final numbers from the state till October at the earliest. That's assuming nothing goes wrong in there negotiating at the state level in October. We, I mean, it is ongoing, and, and each little mini hybrid we do changes things some, and, and how this goes will have an effect. The, I believe that we've been assured that we should have enough for hybrid. Under the state distancing guidelines, we, there is no chance at all that we have enough budget for full in-person because the class sizes have to be smaller than what we usually do, which would require more teachers. I also don't believe we have enough classroom space for full in-person. So I, I mean, Susan?
You know, we haven't had that discussion to the public. We're not being, you know, we're not being open with the public.
We've, we've
I think we have said that.
About discussion of finance, which is open to the public. I, I don't believe we've had that discussion fully in school committee meetings, that's true.
Well, but I, I think when we were voting to go remote or hybrid, we, or full, I think we had the discussion then that we did not have the money or staffing or space with the current guidelines to have everyone return to school fully.
That's correct.
And we did have that discussion when we were discussing that vote.
Susan, I, I agree with you, but I think we need to keep in mind, and we've done this for 27 years. It is the school committee that determines the staffing level. If, if that is the priority, to make sure we have enough staff, then we make sure that every classroom is full, don't we? And we, whether it's hybrid or remote or whatever the scenario is. And that's our responsibility to sit down and make sure that we, we, the school committee, the school And that's our responsibility to sit down and make sure that we, we, the school committee, the school committee prioritizes the budget. If that in fact is, 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 uh, making sure that we have the proper staffing levels and we make sure we have the proper, uh, you know, transportation, then that's where we start. That's how you do a budget. We're gonna do it that way this year. We start at the very beginning, which is where, uh, services begin, and that's in the classroom. Whether it's remote or whether it's in-person or hybrid or whatever it might be. We haven't prioritized the budget. We got a budget, we approved it. We didn't prioritize that budget. You're right. We need to sit down and make one of our meetings fully to decide how we're gonna spend the money. We're charged with spending the money and we need to prioritize the budget. I'm sorry if there's somebody on an upper level who feels that their job is important and relevant to the student that's in the classroom. But that's not my priority. My priority is, has been, and always will be, the classroom teacher and the resources and materials and technologies that they need. That's the highest priority. I agree. That's the conversation that we need to have to make sure, whatever funding it is. There'll never be enough funding unless we prioritize what that funding is. We need to spend our money wisely. And yes, I agree. And we should have that meeting and it should be a full meeting of the total school committee. Because that is what we're charged to do. That is our responsibility.
Which is exactly what we did in our budget hearing last year. We cannot hire staff without an appropriation to pay for them. The priori- I'm not sure what prioritizing you're talking about, Dean.
I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to sit down with you and, and go over, I'll be glad to sit down and go over how we've, how we've managed to balance. I'm sorry, I have the floor. I'll, I'll be glad to sit down with you.
Go through the water.
Budget after budget and show you how we prioritize and got through every year. Every single year. We have a budget that the state's gonna approve, not only the budget, but a one point seven five million dollar increase, which is to adjust for inflation and then a one point one million dollars to, the minimum to meet our net school spending. When I talk to mayors across the state today and other city administrators and town administrators, they don't even know how they're gonna meet net school spending. And we can't, we, we can't provide services. Something is wrong, Mike. And, and the city is gonna sit down with our finance department. We're gonna go through line by line. Something is drastically wrong. Something is drastically wrong. And we're gonna get to the bottom of it because we have the responsibility to the taxpayers and the public to find out what happened here. Something is drastically wrong. When you're getting an increase. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I have the floor.
No, Michael had the floor. No, Michael had the floor and you cut him off. So you did not have the floor. Michael had the floor.
Then I, I...
And we've given you ample time to talk, even though you did not have the floor. We're gonna go back to Michael. Michael, can you finish what you were saying, please?
Yeah, I mean, you know, in order to maintain services, you have to increase the budget by a percent that matches the, and, and it's almost all staff. And we know that's all contractual obligations. You know this. You increase the public safety budget three point five percent and so that avoids layoffs there. The school department did not get a three point five percent increase, was about one percent. The actual cost of staff, contractually obligated salary increases is more than that. The actual appropriation at the moment is seventy-three point three million. To keep the staff level we had last year is over seventy-seven million. So we've had to lay off staff. I mean, that's just, it's simple math, as the comptroller likes to say. You can't hire staff that we don't have appropriations for. It's not mismanagement. It's prioritizing is just choosing which staff to not have based on the reduction in funds.
Michael, did we not get, did we not get?
Five percent increase, the same as public safety, there would have been no layoffs.
Michael, did we not get, did we not get what we got last year in one point seven five million dollar commitment from the state? Yes or no?
I'm, I'm not, I don't understand your question, Dean.
Did, did, will not the state, the state assistance be the same, even adjusting for inflation with an increase of one point seven five million dollars? Yes or no?
As of now, the answer is no. We have not gotten an addition.
No, no, Michael, Michael, Michael. Let's, let's answer the question. Did the state say that, did, did the state say that they're gonna? Did the state say, did the state say that they're gonna give us an increase to adjust for inflation of one point seven five million dollars?
One point seven, yes. They said they're going to, that hasn't happened yet.
We, we haven't done it.
Didn't the city?
So Dean, last...
Didn't the city say?
Dean, let him answer your question. He's seen a few of questions.
He did.
Last year, in...
He said yes.
In addition of extra money from the state, you made an advance appropriation to the school department so we could actually spend that money. Have you made, sent down an appropriation to City Hall, to the city council, for this one point seven five million that has been promised by the state? If not, we can spend it. That would be deficit spending.
Okay, so we are, so if, if we get one point seven five million or one point seven million and we got from the state what we got from them last year, and the one point seven is an adjustment for inflation and you get minimum, minimum, okay? Minimum of one point one million dollar increase. Tell the public, is that, and you're a math teacher, is that not an increase or is it a de- decrease? Because they're insulted by this kind of math. This is bizarre. This is an increase, not a cut. This is what is confusing people. This is what's confusing people and frustrating them. You're trying to tell them you've got a cut when you're getting a one point seven million dollar increase and a million and a minimum, a one point one. That's insulting. Because the taxpayer has lived here my whole life. That's insulting to tell them that. Insulting.
Enough, please.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Just because you don't agree with what I'm saying, gives you no right to cut me off.
Dean, it's not on your agenda.
That gives you no right to cut me off.
Nobody's cutting you off.
That gives you no right at all to cut me off because you don't agree with what I'm saying.
Not a question, not agreeing.
That is not democracy. Because I'm exposing the fact that the school line is getting an increase, not a decrease.
Opportunity.
That's an absolute, that's an... No, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, I'm sorry, Dean.
First of all, you have no right to even be participating in debate. According to Robert's rules of policy procedures, you have no right to be entering into debate.
I haven't been able to even voice a, opinion. What I'm trying to do is keep order.
You have.
What I'm trying to do is keep order in this meeting.
And you're trying to start me from exposing that the school department is getting a substantial increase while Mike Stassen continues to...
And at this point, that is not on the agenda.
Oh, oh, okay. So you're not happy because I've exposed the truth? Thank you. No, that's the truth.
Anything to be lying and misleading people.
No, you are, Peter. You are, Peter. Boy, he's called lies and distortion. One point seven million dollar increase and a one point one is a cut, is a cut.
Can we please mute everyone for one second, um, the host?
Just take a one break.
Now, the host, please mute everyone. Thank you very much. So at this point in time, I need to bring us back to our agenda and we need to move on with our meeting. We can talk about, um, budget and we can put that on an agenda. Right now, that is not the agenda of our meeting. Um, and we are, right now, are on old and new business. We are having, this is a perfect segue, we are having a workshop on Monday, um, to help us work better cohesively, to communicate with one another without being antagonistic to each other. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion, whether, and we're all not going to agree with anybody. But we do need to be respectful of each other and that has not happened at all times. So at this point, um, what I would like to do is we need to make a decision, um, about our, um, workshop meeting, which will go over our protocols and code of ethics. Um, we are having, uh, someone from M A S B, uh, lead the group. We need to make a decision whether that will be in-person, um, at the library, at the high school, or whether we will be doing it remotely. Um, so at this time, we can, um, call on people to, um, sort of weigh in, whether they would be comfortable to meet in-person or remotely. Um, Brandon?
I'm fine with what is ever easier for the group.
Okay, Peter?
Uh, the, the same, whatever is most convenient for the general population, I'm, I'm willing to accommodate.
Melissa?
My preference would be in-person, but if there's someone that, that absolutely cannot come, I don't wanna alienate or leave anyone out. So I'm open to a remote, but preference would be in-person.
Sue?
I'd prefer remote.
Okay, Isabel?
Whatever is easiest. I, I can do either.
Rod?
In all honesty, I believe a remote would, would be far better.
Mike?
I'm assuming in-person would, of course, require us all to be wearing masks, so I would then be okay either way.
Okay, Dean?
I'm okay. I'd like to do it, uh, in-person.
And I would also rather do it in-person as well. Um, if we were to meet in-person, obviously, we would have to, um, adhere to social distancing and wearing masks. Um, but we do have, um, Sue in particular, who is, um, wanting to go, um, remote.
But I could join remotely, right?
Yep, you could join remotely.
Yeah.
How do folks feel about that? I don't know what happened to my screen here. Do people feel comfortable meeting remotely with one person, I mean, meeting in-person with one person, uh, remote? Or is that...
That's perfect with me.
I have no objection.
Fine, I'm here. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I am going to...
Assuming that you are paying attention to me, but I figure I should unmute myself and say like, that's totally fine.
Perfect. All right, um, so what I will do is tell, um, Tracy that we would like to meet in-person and we will have one party being remote. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Um, the other thing that, um, I wanted to, um, mention is I found out today, uh, we were talking about in the policy, um, privacy, which is something we'll be, uh, exploring further. But there is a way for, um, families to blur the background of their screen. And, um, that's something that I think is new. Um, so I was hoping that Steve could explain to the folks listening, how do you find that option, um, on their Chromebook?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, so if you...
Point of order, is this, point of order, is this on the agenda?
So it was under, uh, it should have come under, um, policy subcommittee report.
Is it on the agenda?
It was under policy subcommittee. It should have been on the agenda. It was on our agenda in policy subcommittee we talked about.
Is it on the regular agenda tonight?
So we could reopen the policy subcommittee? Because we talked about it in the policy subcommittee.
If we're gonna start following rules, then we need to follow the rules.
So you're right, Dean, it would be nice to follow rules.
Is, right, exactly. And, and again, as I said, um, is it on the agenda or isn't it?
It was under the policy subcommittee agenda. So what we could do, Dean, and reference from you, is, um, for families who are struggling with the privacy issue and having, uh, a way to blur out, um, the background, um, maybe Steve could, uh, send out, or the administration send out, um, just a little, uh, email burst, um, over connected or whatever to let folks know that that is an option, um, because I know many people spoke about that.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, thank you anyway, Steve. All right, um, any other new or old business?
I, I have an old dis- uh, old business.
So I called them, Melissa, you'll be next, Dean.
Go ahead, yep.
Melissa? Melissa? You had your hand raised?
Hi.
Melissa's kind of frozen.
Wanted to have, um, I'm frozen?
Yeah, you don't have your own, we can move you now.
Okay. So I, I was hoping just to get some clarification about the reopening vote timeline and for the, for the first quarter. So I guess my question is, are we voting at the end of the first quarter? Or are we voting a few weeks earlier, knowing it's gonna take time to steer the ship to open for the first quarter? Um, because I think obviously we're all still in different places with that.
So Melissa's really here.
Of everyone's opinions and I don't want this being dropped on us, you know, before. If you can have a, go ahead.
Go ahead. Melissa, we'll let Paula answer. You've been sort of fading in and out.
So I think your question was about the next phase. So we were hoping on October fifth, we could get a vote from the school committee for second quarter, which begins on Monday, November ninth, um, about where we wanna move towards, if it's a full hybrid, if it's a full reopening, where do we need to go? That would give us the October fifth meeting and two more prior to the reopening of schools. Or, or hybrids or wherever we're going next. But we need time to plan and get everybody sort of geared up.
So it'll be on our agenda for, on the October fifth meeting?
The next meeting, yeah, in two weeks.
Thank you. Dean?
Yes, I, I'm feeding off of, uh, what Melissa said. I think what the public wants to understand is what is the criteria that we're basing our decision on? Uh, I think that's one of the things that's confusing people. Is it science? Is it our own conversations we have? I, I don't, I, I, we can pick any date we want, but what is the criteria? If, if we're doing things based on, on, um, you know, test positives in the city, our percentage rate per hundred thousand, whatever it might be, I think it's just as important to communicate to the public and the parents and staff, what is the criteria? We haven't done that yet. We're, we're doing experiments. We're gonna, we're gonna send first graders in and see how that goes. And then, so I think the confusing part is, they wanna watch, just like the governor said and the president said, there were lo- different levels of opening along the way and there were certain criterias to get to that level. We haven't established that. And I think, uh, I feed off of what Melissa's saying and I agree. Um, you know, if we're gonna wait, then let's do it ahead of time and, but let's communicate whatever the committee's using as a benchmark or a criteria to establish whether or not, uh, what our next steps will be. We need to communicate that and we need to communicate it soon.
And I think that is a good discussion on October fifth. Did, uh, Sue?
I don't wanna rock the boat, but I just wanna express that I would like to see some fin- financial numbers with the staffing, the stu- number of kids that are being serviced remotely in school and a projection of what our next hybrid runoff is going to look like in terms of number of staffing that we're gonna need for that. Uh, we need to know if we're going to be able to afford rolling out the next phase. That's my concern. And in the absence of getting a financial report that would show the numbers, I, you know, I, I'm not sure we're gonna be adequately funded to staff what we need.
Isabel?
This is off topic from what Sue said, so I apologize. Um, but this is kind of touching upon the marching band extracurricular piece, um, that Paula had brought up regarding plans that need to be submitted and things of that nature, um, for like remote clubs to begin to convene. Um, is there going to be some sort of date or deadline that plans need to be submitted by?
We're forgetting of the safety of the kids, of the teachers, of the families. Again, I say, who's going to stand downtown Lumsa with a sign saying, "I sacrificed these people because of my whatever"? Tell me.
Yeah. So, I think, Ron, that, um, you know, clearly as far as the staffing and having the ability to bring people back hybrid, we're going to find out next meeting because obviously we'll need that information to make an educated vote. Um, and hopefully we'll have better understanding of where the state is, is committing the money that they have, you know, promised us. And, you know, obviously regardless of whether we go hybrid or full or whatever, families always have the ability to go remote. Um, and it's going to be, you know, we have to give the parents, or my opinion is we have to give parents, um, some control. So, at this point, um, I would like a motion to adjourn?
None of the new or old business, I'm sorry, new or old business. Uh, let's make sure we bring our rule book for Monday. Let's make sure we bring our rule book, uh, because I think a lot of this stems around what is allowed, what isn't. It's confusing disrespect with the fact that, uh, people might not share the same opinion. So, we call it disrespect. So, let's bring our rule book because one way to run democracy is through some set of rules. We've adopted a set of rules for school committee and, and, and I think that's an important part of Monday night's evening. Secondly, I, I want for the record, so the minutes of the meeting, to reflect that it was okay to lay off 30% of our workforce based on what somebody said, but it's not okay to base our projections on future funding based on what the official statement was from the state. I want to make sure that's on the record and I want to make sure that's in our meeting, uh, minutes. Thank you. And if you need clarification, I have a problem putting that in there, but I think that is a valid point that needs to be included into this conversation. It was okay by, by some, some place, somebody said, "We should anticipate a substantial cut in our budget this year," which, which, which equated to 30, laying off 30% of our workforce. But we can't, but we cannot, we cannot use that 1.7 million dollars because that we, we basically got as a commitment out of conference.
At this point, you're continuing the conversation. We can note your, um, views in the minutes.
Thank you.
And at this point, we have a motion and a second, um, and this meeting is adjourned.
All right. I just want to make sure it's, it's, it's in the minutes. Thank you.
All right. Bye, everyone. Thank you very much for your patience.
All right. Stay safe.